Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for January 9th, 2017. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Strike?
Here.
Mr. Spohes and Mr. Spinelli have been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the minutes from December 12th, 2016? Motion for Mr. Strike. Can I get a second? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. On special order business disclosures, Danielle?
I was not present at the previous two meetings, so I will be abstaining on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Greg? Brendan?
No disclosures.
John?
I have none.
Mitzi?
I also missed the previous two meetings and will not be voting on the consent agenda.
I have, I would like to disclose on case, or is it 2017-2, an ordinance adopting the unit lot subdivision process. I did participate. The ordinance is put forth by both staff and a community group called the Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus, and that group formed a subcommittee of which I participated on. It was comprised of people from a variety of subject areas, including attorneys, real estate folks, developers, and planners. You know, that said, this is a recommendation that moves on to the Assembly, and so typically those types of situations, I am allowed to participate, but I'd like to listen to the body as to whether or not that my participation on the subcommittee constitutes a conflict. John?
Well, I would say no. In fact, I think it'd be very helpful to have you participate in discussions since you have so much information regarding it. I'm sorry, what?
Brendan, you're going to direct. Go ahead. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So I move to direct Commissioner Robinson to participate in the case.
Can I like to call the question, please?
Next up is actually Mr. Strike. Could you give an amendment to the-
I believe you're still doing disclosure.
Yeah.
I don't know if you hit Mitzi. Did you?
Yeah, she indicated she didn't have a-
Yes, and the, on the matter of the consent agenda and unfinished business, we have an additional resolution that was placed forth to us regarding the bus route system changes, and would like to move that to the end of tonight's agenda after G, and so all public hearings are complete.
So a motion to change the order today, that's an unnumbered resolution, but the resolution related to people mover, that's seconded by Mr. Walker. Any objection? Hearing none, that resolution is added to the end of our agenda.
And I have another motion I would like to make on moving the, and that would be on the case 2016-0127 regarding the long-range plan, also moved to the end of the agenda prior to-
Thank you, and that's seconded by Mr. Walker, prior to the resolution that you just added.
Correct.
Very good. And any objection? Prior to or after?
After.
After. Thank you. Any objection? So the agenda is reordered, and I would just like to state that the land use plan map were beyond public hearing process, but that, that item, which we're still in deliberations on, is after four separate public hearings, so it remains to be seen whether we'll actually get to it at all this evening, so if you're, if you're just here for that, you may be in for a long wait. We are, however, scheduled to take up the land use plan map, and only the land use plan map, at our final meeting in January, which is actually the last Monday in January. Is that right? So January 30th, 31st, somewhere in there. So with that, first case is 2016-81. Oh, and the reason I didn't call for, for vote on the consent agenda is we do not have enough commissioners who were not conflicted out to be able to vote on resolution 2016-48, so unfortunately that will be held over until our next meeting. Next up, municipality of Anchorage Parks and Rec, University Lake Park Master Plan, Public Hearing Draft. We'll hear a staff presentation, and then we'll move on to public hearings, so staff and then presumably the petitioner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before the commission is approval of the University Lake Park Master Plan. University Lake Park is own PLI and is comprised of one tract of land totaling just over 64 acres. The University Lake Park Master Plan is a 10-year vision for the park with the intent to, quote, "provide for the diverse needs of the many user groups and addresses some of the park's unique challenges." This master plan identifies current and future needs, addresses issues and concerns, and establishes a framework for future development, management, and maintenance, end quote. Eight themes and goals for the University Lake Park identified in the master plan. These goals are: preservation of natural areas, addressing water quality and habitat restoration, improving signage and wayfinding, addressing parking needs, mitigating environmental risk from increasing park visitation, reducing conflict between user groups, deterring negligent and destructive behavior, and improving park maintenance and increasing enforcement. These goals and themes were identified during an extensive public involvement process led by park planning staff. University Lake Park has filled a niche for many residents and visitors of the Anchorage Bowl since its dedication. The available amenities allow accommodation of multiple user groups. The park will continue to receive pressure from increasing use and increasing urban development along its borders. Given the unique location, character, and purpose of the park, planning staff believes this master plan represents a vision to fulfill recreation needs within an urban community and prioritizes the preservation of natural resources. Planning staff recommends approval of University Lake Park Master Plan, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report. Thank you.
You want to go here, or you want to go straight into, I think there's, Dwayne, you got a presentation as well, or? Gotcha, Steve does. So you want to ask staff first, or you want to wait for that?
Let me think a second. I just want one question.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may. There was a comment by the Department of Transportation regarding suggesting that there needs to be a parking analysis prior to the development of the parking. Have you considered that? Do you have any comment on that? I didn't see it as a recommendation.
Through the chair, I did touch on it in the staff packet. That parking analysis and the parking lot expansion would trigger an administrative site plan review separate from the master plan, so that would be a different analysis that would be done.
Wouldn't hurt, though, necessarily, to require that as part of the site plan analysis, would it?
Correct. That'd be separate from the master plan. That'd be with the administrative site plan review or the parking lot expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions at this point? You fit it into 10 minutes?
I think so.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to read the whole procedure for, for the public process.
Sure, sure.
After staff presentation is complete, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issues. Persons who wish to testify, and this following the petitioner's presentation, will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, 10 minutes; representatives of groups such as community councils, five minutes; and individuals, three. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Deals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by P&amp;Z of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Steve Raafuse, R-A-F-U-S-E. I'm a planner in the Parks Department, and first of all, I just want to thank staff and the commission for taking the time to hear this case. So University Lake Park, as it exists today, is largely the result of historic development in the UMed district. In the 1950s, this area was the frontier of town, and throughout the 1960s, the site was used in the extraction of gravel to support development of the institutions that we now see today. In the 1980s, Chester Creek was rerouted through what is now known as Beam Lake, or, sorry, what is, to create Beam Lake for what is now known as University Lake. Shortly after, the municipality of Anchorage acquired the site in a land trade with Alaska Methodist University, now APU, and in the years that followed, a group called Friends of University Lake was formed to help restore and enhance the site as a native plant and animal reserve. In 2003, the Anchorage Assembly designated University Lake Park one of six off-leash dog park spaces. The introduction of off-leash dogs fundamentally changed the character of University Lake Park from a quiet and contemplative natural area to a more active and popular recreation destination. So the popularity of University Lake Park has had both positive and negative impacts on the park. Increased foot traffics created a vibrant and fun environment at the park, which individuals feel safer than a more remote and less developed parks in our park system. While this is generally considered positive, increased foot traffic has also had negative impacts on the natural environment, as individuals and dogs have trampled shoreline vegetation causing erosion and leading to water quality concerns. So last year, the Planning and Zoning Commission had heard the UMed District Plan. One of the action items in that plan was to develop a master plan for University Lake Park, and I had participated on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, and shortly after, we began work on this plan. This plan's a product of an extensive public involvement process, which included outreach to 10 community councils, two presentations to the university area community council, 10 stakeholder interviews, two public workshops, of which we had 100 people attend the first workshop, and about 40 people attend the second, and then we also worked with an advisory group and had three meetings, and that advisory group had folks from Fish and Game, US Fish and Wildlife Service, the community council, as well as neighboring institutions. So through this whole process, there were eight common themes that we hope to address through this plan, first of which, University Lake Park is a valued natural area and a rapidly urbanizing space, and the UMed District Plan pointed this out. One of the major themes was growth, growth and change happening in the district. The park is also being loved to death, and that's a victim of its own success and popularity. Water quality and habitat restoration need to be addressed through this plan. Numerous different recreation interests often experience conflicts at the park. Signage boundaries, wayfinding are unclear. For example, some folks don't know which trail's actually an off-leash trail and which one is on-leash. Most park users are responsible, although not all. Parking does not meet current demand and needs to be addressed, and we'll, we'll touch upon DOT's recommendation in a moment, and then better management, maintenance, and enforcement of rules and regulations at the park needs to occur. So these common themes for the foundation, or created the foundation for discussion, of which we discuss at the advisory group, and then we develop recommendations. So the University Lake Park Master Plan provides a 10-year vision for management, maintenance, and development of the park. It largely maintains the park much as it exists today with improvements to existing facilities, and recommendations are based on research and best practices, as well as public preferences for the future management and development of the park. So recommendations are organized into generally six categories. Each category includes a series of strategies or objectives. So number one, retain the natural character of the park. The public voice a strong preference for retaining the natural character of the park. Members of the public cited increased pressure from urbanization as an important factor in the need to maintain University Lake as a natural area, and I think you folks, you've seen the Northern Access Road come up to your plate. I know APU is interested in, in developing endowment lands, and so the character of the UMed district is going to change in years to come. So the master plan recommends strategies to retain the natural character of the park. That leads to number two, water quality, wildlife, and natural resource management. Balancing public use with the preservation of green space and wildlife habitat was a common theme. The master plan recommends several natural resource management strategies to improve water quality, protect the flora and fauna, and rehabilitate degraded areas to allow for continued public use. Couple examples include, right now you have unfettered access to the water's edge. Dogs will access the water wherever they feel so inclined, so by providing controlled access and rehabilitating areas that have been eroded will improve water quality and erosion. Trails to support a variety of uses. The diversity of trail types and trail experiences is what make University Lake a popular citywide destination, so the master plan recommends balancing, or preserving the balance of paved trails and soft surface trails, including maintaining the off-leash trail designation and improving trail surface and realigning trails to eliminate conflicts. And a perfect example is if the main kiosk at University Lake Park, you have fast-moving cyclists, folks who are recreating, folks who are commuting to work or to class, and then you also have, it's a common area where folks with off-leash dogs will gather before going back to their car. So rerouting that multi-use trail to south of the parking lot would eliminate those conflict zones. Improving signage and wayfinding. So signage and wayfinding has sort of been pieced together over the years. It's not well-defined, it's unclear, and most visitors are often confused, and this leads to conflicts. So the master plan recommends a hierarchy of gateways, nodes, and wayfinding to clearly define trail types and specific use areas, also adding regulatory signage as well as interpretive information to better make the public aware of some of the uses and perhaps the damage of if you don't pick up your animals, after your animal. Parking to meet demand. So parking's been an issue for many years, and it's been an issue with property neighbors, for example, the native medical campus as well as APU, so we want to be a good neighbor, so we want to be able to provide enough parking to meet demand. So DOT had submitted those comments, and typically when we have funding secured, we'll work with the MOA Traffic Department to come up with a demand and determine how big the parking lot should be. But the general recommendation of the plan is about up to 50 spaces, and this is a little bit more than you can find. Right now, there's 22 spaces in the developed parking lot with six spaces of overflow. However, with University Lake Drive, the potential of the extension going through, I'm not sure if that plan's going to include on-street parking, which may greatly minimize the amount of available parking. Also, maintenance and amenities. Regular maintenance combined with installation of new amenities make for a clean, comfortable, and enjoyable park experience, so the master plan recommends things like regular trash pickup, provision of restrooms, installation of new amenities to improve the health and appearance of the park, and the function of the park. So the Parks and Recreation Department would like to bring this plan for approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. There was a wider range of opinions that we heard throughout the process. Some folks, no dogs; some folks, dogs, yes; some folks, none of this, that; some folks wanted a hardened edge and more urban park; many folks wanted to keep it much the way it is. So with the wide, the wide range of opinions regarding management and development, this master plan identifies recommendations to address issues and concerns, and does the best job in attempts to balance the interests of all the different stakeholders and user groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Raafuse? Danielle?
I had a question on many of your action items. I noticed, I think, in eight different areas, you mentioned using interpretive trails. I was wondering, was there any discussion that maybe you may be over-relying on one solution, or is there a reason that that was a solution to almost every single area?
I think that one of the issues that we found is there's a lot of misinformation and not a big understanding as to how folks' behavior actually impacts the natural environment and the park itself, and so in working with some of our partners, we've looked at using interpretive information to improve that sense of awareness. It's not going to be the only strategy, it can't be the only strategy, but it definitely was a reoccurring theme, and I think it's appropriate to make sure that that's in there, if anything, a little bit of overkill to ensure that that goes forward.
And then another question I had was in regards to your enforcement. Was there any discussion and talks of, I know a lot of other cities require off-leash licenses for their dogs, as a way to both pay for the effects that that has on those areas and as a way to enforce that dogs are behaving properly, just as open disclosure. I used to live in Minneapolis, and I have a dog that I had there, and I have it here, and you had to pay for an off-leash dog permit, so that way it could hold the people responsible, so you could actually have an enforcement mechanism. And you could only enter the parks if you had those off-leash permits.
Yeah, through the chair. That's a, that's a great point. Right now, as long as your dog is licensed, it's allowed to be at these off-leash areas. One of the major challenges was how do we get more enforcement? You know, even having an animal control officer write a ticket every other week, I think, would really wake some people up in terms of being more aware of what their, their animal's doing, perhaps leashing their dog and taking them into the area. So that's something that we're going to have to, I think, work collaboratively with enforcement and find resources to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring.
Yes, there was an ordinance originally for the dog parks, a variety of them throughout town. Do you have a copy of the ordinance for this park? I didn't see it in here, but-
I do. Would you like me to bring it up?
If you could describe what the geographic boundaries of the dog park originally, if it included, was included in the ordinance.
So the ordinance is, and it would help to, to look at it, it's really quite vague, and Dwayne, if you have anything to add, go for it. Yeah. So essentially, the ordinance just identifies locations. So no more description other than University Lake Park, Far North Bicentennial Park, North Gas Line Trail, Russian Jack Park, Connors Bog, South Anchorage Sports Park, and the old native hospital site.
It actually said Russian Jack Park?
Yes.
So that would be entirely, the entire Russian Jack Park. I'm, I'm just wondering if that's what it said. I'm surprised.
That level of detail's not in here.
Okay, so it does, so would theoretically include the entire University Lake Park?
I suppose by this document, yes, but then in actions go in the future, I think it essentially put the onus on us to define these spaces.
Okay, well, that's very interesting. The trail improvements, I think, that you specified in here pertain mostly to the dog loop, right? Around the lake?
That is the most heaviest use and the one that probably needs the most work.
And it's the main route around the lake?
Yeah.
For pedestrians, unless you're a biker or something, use the multi-use trail. What do you, what's the improvements for that trail that you're proposing? I wasn't, I'm not a trail construction guy, so I'm not really sure what it, what entail.
Yeah, I'll speak to that, and I'll let Dwayne, he's a landscape architect, he can chime in anytime, but typically soft surface trails, so either bare earth or D1 gravel. There's some contention about D1 gravel in terms of that crushed aggregate, how it affects dogs and dogs' paws, but there's typically, and the site is originally a gravel pit, so that, you know, many of your soils underneath are going to be down to gravel. But essentially, creating those trails typically two to four feet wide is the main loop, and then going in, and we would use our youth employment and parks crew to continue to do upgrades over the years in time.
Oh, yes, Dwayne.
Yeah, I think it's 48, if I'm not mistaken, except in the, with respect to your first question-
Dwayne, can you just state your name?
Oh, I, oh, thank you. Through the chair, my name is Dwayne Adams, and I'm a landscape architect with Erskine, and I've been assisting municipality with this project. With respect to Commissioner Spring's question that, well, it's the dog, well, there, there are areas that dogs are allowed to be off-leash and areas that they are not, specifically in the area where there's a lot of trouble with beavers, there's also nesting shorebirds, those areas, for example, are not off-leash. And so, yes, you could have a dog there, but the dog must be on leash in those areas. And like virtually every trail in this community, whether that be the Tonyos Coastal Trail or the Chester Creek Trail, or any trail in any park in this town, dogs are allowed anywhere, so all, all trails virtually are dog trails. We don't make a discrimination, except with respect to what is on leash or off leash. And we do have off-leash areas and on-leash areas in this park. With respect to that surface, the intent is to meet the American Disabilities Act, which is a firm surface that does not preclude use by the disabled, and it's a very general statement, and, you know, it's one of the proof, proof is in the pudding sort of a solutions. It can be a gravel trail as long as it's a firm, stable surface that is usable by the disabled, and, and so the test is whether it meets that standard, and each community in this country have dealt with it differently.
Look, I should have probably prefaced my question with what I really am trying to get at. This is not really fair. But my concern is that the trail is going to be used more than by dog users, and as you know, this is the UMed district, there's a huge number of employees that are at the native center, and the only reference I heard about that is their bad smoking habits, apparently, that, you know, don't want that to be in the park. But there's also going to be the Endowment Lands, which is about 50 acres to the north, as you know. I didn't see much reference about that here, and I'm a little disappointed because I think you need to create a context beyond what's already, what's currently there in the plan, and that context is that this could be quite a beautiful amenity to support that employment density, both north and south of there, and I don't see any, many references to that. So my, what I'm getting at is the trail needs to be of such equality, I think, to be able, to allow, you know, nicely dressed people who work in the offices, and I'm talking about myself. Well, of course, I'm talking about Alaskans, so, okay, that's kind of not, doesn't really compute, but people who wear street shoes sometimes, you know, they might want to go for, walk there. I used to walk there from the permanent center, and when I walked there, of course, there was no, the trails were often muddy and wet and puddles, and it was very, not very good for supporting the people who actually work around there. The trail, I think, more than just meeting ADA requirements, need to be suitable for people to walk there at lunchtime and not have to, you know, change into their jeans or whatever, so they can go out and enjoy the natural area, beautiful natural area, which I think, by the way, I think you did a great job, you know, do, solving some of the, the environmental problems there. I think that was very good, so I don't want to be totally negative here, but my concern is that whatever trail improvement you make should be also suitable for people who, who work around the area, so they can enjoy it at lunchtime and, and use it to escape their little cubicles that are scrunched up then, you know. Another question I have-
Do you want to, you want to respond?
Glad you- Can you actually answer the question, I guess, if it would be appropriate, maybe?
Sure, and this was a question that we actually posed in our, in our meeting, so, you know, recognizing that as the UMed district grows, it's becoming increasingly more urbanized, and is this desired, and overwhelmingly, we heard from the public to retain the natural character. So in addition to that, and addressing the other issues, we did make the plan a 10-year plan. So typically, master plans are a 20-year plan, but because of all the growth and change that is happening in and around the park, we gave it a 10, a 10-year window so we could come back and revisit this topic, because the UMed district, and particularly the properties abutting University Lake Park, have the potential to bring dramatic change to the district, and we felt in trying to do, sort of have a little bit of thinking ahead and foresight, we created a 10-year plan.
I appreciate that, and that's, that was my thought exactly also, but I would probably reduce it to less than that, depending on maybe a five-year plan. I don't know, nobody knows how quickly it's going to be developed. The economy's not very good, but the health service industry is the only industry that's growing, and I expect that there'll be demand for that property, and five years, it might be more appropriate to review it in five years rather than 10 years. 10 years is a long time, and a lot can happen in 10 years. That'd be my opinion. Can I ask you another question through the chair? Where's the location of the, what I saw as the community use area classification? I didn't see that on the map, and that apparently is something, is an area that can be more intensely developed, right? Oh, that's right, in the middle of the dog run area, yeah? That's just that little spot there?
It's a, it's a small piece of land.
Why, why is that such a small area? That was part of the park plan, right?
It's the design, through the chair, Dwayne Adams, again, that was a designation in the, the park plan, the, you know, why the disparity? I can't answer that, and I can't find anybody who can, really.
That might be something to consider in the, when you review it in the future, when you got more of a feel for what the development around that area, because there might be a need for more intense development to maybe, you know, for more of an active area, or maybe a pavilion or something that you can have music at, or something like that, you know, when, in the future, but it might be something to consider later when you review it, to expand that area, to meet the needs of the people who work in the area, but just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I have a question, and I actually live quite near here, and I, it has to do, I think, with John's- with John's questions in the changing nature and development of the area. I know our friends from APU are here, and currently, the neighborhood utilizes the area north of University Lake, you know, as, wants to call it a soccer field, but it's a field, it's an open field both winter and summer, and it gets utilized quite heavily in the event, I guess not in the event, but when that goes away because of development, was there any thought about bringing additional open space to this area? Then, in other words, it functions pretty well right now, because it actually feels like two parks. It feels like an open area where there aren't dogs that are jumping up on little kids, and there isn't, and I've had it happen, and an area that is a different area for just kind of informal play. And I wondered if that was contemplated again as this place grows and develops?
There was, through the process, so essentially, that north boundary of the lake already goes through an easement of APU. Most people probably don't realize that exists on paper. There was discussion, and there was, I would say, there's a preference from, from the community to acquire that property, given how budgets are just in sort of the states.
It's very valuable land, to be an acquisition.
It's very, very valuable land, and in conversations we've had with APU, and just sort of staying aware, it looks like they're moving forward already with some plans to develop that land. I do know what you're saying, I think it's a very valid point, although I'm not sure that that's just the direction that things are moving.
I think it's, it just, it doesn't, it contemplates more the users currently than it does, I think, the future needs, is sort of my observation. One other question about the water access, before I go to Mitzi. The idea is that these water accesses would be able to be utilized both for dogs and it's just for human access. I assume that means bringing a kayak or canoe or something like that. Is that, is that right? And they, would they all be built to sort of be able to haul a canoe down the shore? Is that the idea?
Yes, it is. It's, the impact of a dog running back, back and forth in the water, launching a canoe, it still requires some sort of remedial action beyond just revegetation.
Dog can get down the hill a little easier than a canoe, but...
Without causing erosion.
Yes.
That is true.
I've done it.
Four-wheel drive does wonders.
And, and I lied, one last one. The open play area on the north side, I mean, that is the area where a lot of people park currently, and there's not shown to be any, any parking, presumably because that's the road that goes through there. You sort of alluded to if that road would accommodate on-street parking, maybe, as it's currently used today. No, is it just there wouldn't be any parking on that north side?
I feel others in the room would better be able to answer that question. I'm actually going to meet with folks from Dow on Wednesday to sort of discuss how, what the road's going to look like. From the designs I've seen preliminarily, it does not look like on-street parking is going to be provided.
Would you be able to come off onto parkland for a portion of that?
I suppose that's something that we could look into. However, with the road and its current sort of configuration, you're already losing a lot of that space right there. And so, I think it would be, essentially, if you accommodate a parking lot on the north side of the lake in that play zone, you essentially lose, from its, from its size now, you lose 75% of it.
Mitzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think actually we're, I must want to take off kind of on the same, the same thread, and that's that it appears that the water access points really aren't well-designed for watercraft, as in it's a long haul from the parking area to any place where you could actually launch a kayak, which kind of begs the question, what you were just talking about, that open play area that's going to be enticingly close to, you know, a closer point of access for use of watercraft. So I'm kind of curious about what the consideration was for on water use of human-powered watercraft, which was an historic use of this site at one time.
Sure, through the chair. That's a great question. Two of the locations, particularly with the extension of the road, and assuming that there's not going to be on-street parking, it would be a very long haul to bring a kayak down that, unless you had parked or were staying, or there was some sort of rental operation out of the hotel there, then it would be a pretty direct shot. There is, right at the corner of APU land in the field where they run their summer camps, that has historically been used to bring kayaks and canoes down to the water. And so, depending how the road continues on, and what the design of that, and would it be able to accommodate folks bringing kayaks in who would choose to recreate on the lake, that seems to be the best option in terms of access and bringing your kayak actually to the water.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that the lack of a human-powered boat launch was something that was lacking in the plan.
Thank you, Mitzi. Any other questions before we go to public hearing? Thank you, gentlemen. Stand by. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. As I stated previously, if you're representing a group, you can, five minutes yourself, you get three minutes. You'll note that there'd be a light that'll start green and turn yellow in the, in the middle when you have a minute left. And I ask, can I just ask, show of hands, who's planning to testify on this case? There's not too many. So those of you, you know, come on, come on down towards the front, so there's going to be at least, there's someone behind this gentleman, so we're kind of ready to keep things rolling. We have, we do have four public hearings here this evening. Thank you. State your name for the record, and spell it if you feel like we won't pick up on it.
Hi, I'm Paul Stang, S-T-A-N-G, President of the University Area Community Council. Can I give a handout to you all?
Yes, you may. You can just hand them all, and we'll pass them down, that's fine.
In fact, the top sheet of what I gave you pertains not only to this case, but to 21701 and 201702, 002. So I'll refer to those later, but just the top portion at the moment, and the two resolutions that are attached, that are pertinent to this University Lake master plan. The UACC was actively involved in the development of the University Lake master plan, and we congratulate Parks and Rec on a successful completion of this planning effort. On March 2nd, we passed a resolution which is attached in support of the master plan, and then on March, on April 6th, we also passed a resolution pertaining to off-leash dogs, and the need to control them and pick up their waste in the park. These reflects, these two resolutions reflect our position of the community council, and we trust that the U members of the commission will read both of them. While the plan is a good start, it's only a first step. We urge the mayor and the assembly to obtain the funds necessarily, necessary to implement and enforce the plan. I think a key point here is that we're in a low-budget situation, clearly, and too often, we have great intent with a plan, and then it sits on the shelf and nothing really happens. We hope that's not the case. It's a high-use area, but to preserve it and keep it in good shape, we need attention. I think the mention that Steve made, my personal view is that Steve mentioned this notion about a periodic reinforcing of the rules with respect to off-leash dogs and on-leash dogs with respect to their, picking up their poop and what have you. Would be really good to send a signal that the muni's serious. Too often in parks, what we have found is that people just ignore the rules. We live near Goose Lake, and regularly, people are in there, very few of them bring, most of them bring their dogs, some of them just ski, come by themselves, but most of them bring their dogs, and very few of them actually pick up after their dogs. And of course, what happens in summer, that's where our kids are swimming. And what the problem is, is the coliform count is, is above average there, and not much has happened, not much is done. So the same thing at University Park. Anyway, that's the essence of it. We had presented testimony earlier in the spring on this, and we again commend Parks and Rec, and Steve in particular, for doing such a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? We had fumes in my house this morning from the school buses, so I can't talk very well. Diesel fumes at 5:30 in the morning are not very nice. Anyway, bear with me. I'm Barbara Garner. I am the Parks and Rec Chair for the University Area Community Council, but I'm here tonight to speak as an individual and for eight other hikers I took with me around the Dog Park Lake Trail the last Tuesday. So, first of all, need to express out to a lot of people who have dogs that this is a multi-use park. It's not just for dogs. And there are actually two maps on the internet that say it is a University Lake Dog Park. It doesn't say it's, so just a regular multi-use area. So there are conflicts going on there. This does include the dirt trails around the lake as multi-use. I hiked, biked, skied throughout the muni with a large group of senior women. Many have not been at University Lake since the 2000s. Off-leash dogs are intimidating, as are some people. And by the way, I can also tell you what the original boundary was, if you ask me afterwards. I was there the night of the meeting. Last Tuesday, I led eight hikers on the lake trail, ages 60s, 70s, and 80s, two with small dogs on leash. We met at the Elmore Parking Lot 11:00 a.m., walked the one-mile lake trail, including those near the narrows between the lakes. Hikers' observations, estimated 40-plus dogs during this 40-45-minute walk. Dogs appeared controlled, several owners kept them close when we passed, others roamed off the trail. Some walkers felt dogs came too close. Most dog walkers were women, very few men, one male mountain biker north side of the lake. No dogs on leash in the parking lot, the sign ignored. One hiker arrived about 20 minutes later and was jumped on twice in the parking lot, an off-leash dog. The owner made no attempt to intervene. The concerns for the amount of feces they saw along the trail. They noticed trail signs either unseen or ignored. Group said you need to make them larger, suggested muni allow citizen arrest. Another one said dog owners should pay a fee. Questioned why do people with no pets pay for dogs walking off-leash? One hiker returned in the afternoon with her husband, both in their 80s. More dogs than, she said. Felt some came too close, was obvious people were not following posted rules, but in general, there were a lot of good people with their dogs. They were being obedient. We think that they are there quite common, and that makes the dogs much more used to being in the park. Near noon, three of us walked east on the paved trail linked between the parking and the lake, and we saw that the trail had been obviously groomed then for tracking, for skis. Five dogs just on the east side of what there is a small traffic circle that comes up to the lake from Tudor Road. Five dogs were off-leash on that trail, and walking in the newly-made track, not so nice. Nearby is the new Anchorage Native Medical Center patient housing. It just opened a week ago. It's a six-floor hotel, 202 rooms, most rooms for people living out of Anchorage. Its website includes, is that my end?
That's your end, but there's a question for you in the queue. Go, John.
Yes, I'd like to know more about the conflicts between the dogs and the, and the hikers, the pedestrians, and also the geographic boundary of the original ordinance.
And would you repeat the first part about, know more about the dogs and the hikers?
Basically what you're talking right now.
Well, I think I gave you that part. It's their estimate is that the dogs are definitely something that is, needs to be controlled, has to be controlled. And I wanted to share with you something that the community council is bringing up in our next meeting. It's a resolution for Park Patrol. We're going to vote on it February 1st.
So, no, but Barbara, at this point, your time's out, so you can respond to his questions, but anything beyond his questions?
Thank you.
Specifically, the, with the original ordinance...
Original boundaries. I was here the night that it occurred. It happened in June 2003, and it occurred within the space of 30 days. The dogs had been over there using an area where University Lake Road comes up to what is known as the playground area. Where the hotel is now, that whole area in front of it, next to the lake, was considered an area where the dogs were going to be off-leash, as well as all the way around on the slope side of APU, and up to where the APU boundary started. That's all that it was. When we went over there, we soon found out that people got tired of just playing there because there were so many, and there was feces everywhere. University Lake Road was covered. I had a president of the community council ask me to bring my camera and come over there. It was loaded with feces. That was a big thing. So we tried to make efforts to get people to pay attention to cleaning it up. The other thing was, then they started walking across APU's land, then they started walking over where it was muni land again, and we said, well, this is not an off-leash park area. They didn't care. They came without leashes, they were there with many dogs, they were on the soccer field, they said they were going there anyway, didn't matter. So it's an attitude adjustment that is really pathetic.
Thank you very much. Maybe I'll follow up with this, with the consultant and see if there's some, it seems like there should be some minutes regarding the ordinance discussion during that time. It'd be interesting to see that if there was discussion about the extent of the dog park visually.
Dick Trainee was involved in that, that evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Barbara, is that your water bottle there? Steve's just leaving your stuff around. Poor housekeeping.
My name's Kathy Forster. First, I'd like to thank and compliment all of the individuals...
Lift the mic up towards, there you go.
All right. All right, first, I'd like to thank and compliment all of the organizations and individuals that participated in developing the plan. I support it, and I support the process that was used to develop it. One thing I'd like to say first is Anchorage is a really good place for providing lots of places for people to walk, for people to hike, for people to bike, and people to play with their children, but there are very few places in Anchorage for people to walk with their dogs off-leash. And so that's a very valuable gift provided by University Lake and a few other parks. I agree that parking is an issue that is a growing concern. Parking becomes more of an issue every day. And I agree that adding toilets would be good. I also agree that poop cleanup is an issue, and I urge consideration of a better enforcement program. I myself carry my poop bags everywhere I go. I would support and be happy to pay an off-leash permit as a funding and enforcement tool. And as far as people who like to go out at lunch and hike there, I keep a pair of mud boots in my car. It saves the city money over putting in paved trails, and it keeps the natural look. Thank you.
Thank you. I think she called you soft, John, for not having some boots in your office. Anyone else wishing to testify? Come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Robert Shipley. I'm speaking on behalf of the Anchorage Waterways Council. I'd like to state, in general, we support the plan that's been presented to us, and more specifically on the master plan goals. There's about eight of them iterated on page four of the evening's handout, and so I would like to just briefly speak to the ones that are related to water and water quality. The second one, addressing water quality and habitat restoration, it's been mentioned and discussed already this evening quite a bit, and I'd like to support those comments. More specifically, the issue of dog feces is quite significant in almost all of our public water bodies where there's access, because people play, dogs play, dogs do their thing, and surprise, surprise, not everybody is self-policing and picking up their dogs' baggies. So that's a continuing problem. And as is pointed out, feces in the winter become full of corn organisms in the water in the summer, and we're not talking about just the lake that needs to be cleaned up because that is a, is an enlargement of Chester Creek, and so all the way down Chester Creek to the inlet where kids play in the creeks and so forth, that you're unaware that all the fecal material's been washing off in the summer rains or the spring breakup and so forth. So, and that kind of a thing, to be addressed effectively, is going to take some clout, some policing, some... some policing, some pretty strict planning. Another issue of water quality, potential problem is the siltation from the... As has been stated, that's a form of gravel pit. So, those trails around the lake, most of the dog walk trails are gravel to a large extent, and they're easily erodible. And with a lot of abuse between dog feet and people's feet, there gets erosion during runoff and breakup. So, it's going to be tough having both a well-accessible, nice trail and one that doesn't erode into the lake, too. So, that's going to be a challenge, and needs to be addressed. And deterring negligent and destructive behavior, that goes along specifically, I'm talking about the dog pickup, the dog bags. And there needs either, whether it needs to be a periodic park ranger, and that goes along with more improved signage for education, we believe. So, those are my comments tonight.
Couple of questions for you, Mr. Shipley. Mr. Spring, then Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, so you're the Water Quality Council?
Anchorage Waterways Council.
Waterways Council, right. So, there was some information in the report regarding the water quality, fecal coliform levels. Can you elaborate on that? Have you done any studies on that?
We have, and I don't have the numbers in my mind, but I know we've done it at the outlet and at the inlet periodically, not regularly, because that actually should be a function of the municipality, Health Department, but...
Does it meet the swimmable requirement level?
Yes, as I recall, especially at the outlet.
You say exceeds it, though?
Exceeds, yeah. They call it water contact...
It used to be called swimmable, fishable, or whatever, right? Something like that?
It's the same thing. If you're going to be in contact with the water, playing in it in any way, those are the levels.
So, and then there was some discussion in the report regarding the source of that contamination, that it's hard to pinpoint the source, whether it's the dogs around the park or whether it's upstream or whatever. But is, what's your opinion on that?
I would think so, because short of doing DNA analysis, because there's a lot of waterfowl and the beavers, the mammals in the summer utilize that, and sometimes in large numbers, and then the dogs, too. And some could come from the neighborhoods upstream from the lake, from people that have properties in that old area that come right down to the creek, and if they have dogs in the backyard. I mean, there's innumerable potential sources, and short of a very specific study, I can't determine it.
So, is it possible to say that the elimination of the dog feces would help to reduce the and meet the water quality standards or not?
That would be my guess, based on some experience in general, situations similar to that. Just by controlling the sources, you control the...
That might be one strategy, I know there's something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Do you think that there are any strategies that were not proposed in the plan that could be used to help clean the water in this area?
Chlorination. I'm being facetious, but it's one of those situations. It's a public use area. It's popular. It's open to all of the above, including dogs and waterfowl and beavers. So, if you can tell you control them as sources, you're not going to stringently control the result. So, you've got to decide what you want to live with, what are the priorities for the community use facility. And I don't have the answer for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on forward. Anyone else wishing to testify? Come on forward.
My name is Leslie Zacharias, and I live right next to the dog park, and I have dogs that I take there pretty well a daily basis. And this is the first time I've heard actually of some of the planning. We got, I believe, a notice in the mail, and it was interesting listening to the Park gentlemen, because it seemed like there was a lot of discussion going on that I would have actually liked to have gone and listened to, but it was the first time as a neighboring community member that I'd heard about it. And so, I guess my experience, being there every day, I pick up after my dogs, you know, they're not jumping on people. I agree that there are very few park areas in town where you can take a dog and let them off-leash. It's in all of the time that I've spent there, and I've lived next to there for three years, not once have I come home with dog poop on my shoe. And I walk through the woods, I walk through the little trails, and I see people there in the winter, especially some of the dog owners, that come with sleds and garbage bags and try to pick up even other people, the non-responsible, the folks that ruin it for all of the rest of us. I see them picking up dog poop. And I feel like that community values that park so much, because it's really one of few parks like that really anywhere. I don't know anybody that has a dog park that's as good as our dog park. And I think that if that community was rallied a little bit more and engaged a little bit more, that you might find volunteer groups popping up, willing to even go and make up for the non-responsible folks. I also go, you know, near the water with the dogs. Again, I've been all over that dog park the only time of year, the springtime, when the snow melts out, does it get kind of gross and yucky, and there's usually a transition period. But outside of that time of year, I can honestly say that I have yet to have come home with poop on my shoe. And so, I feel the fecal situation, which is one that kind of gets brought up regularly, compared to the numbers of waterfowl that are on that lake and the amount of poop that I'm seeing on a daily basis is non-comparable. I mean, there's far more goose poop around the edge of that lake than there is dog poop. Also, I guess I just, like I said, I wanted to reiterate how few areas we get to go take our dogs off-leash. And it's unfortunate, you know, that the complaints that I'm hearing, when I listen to these folks, I see those people, too, periodically, but not on a daily basis. On a daily basis, I walk through there. It's wonderful. The dogs are free. I'm not getting jumped on. My eight-year-old comes with me, and he doesn't get jumped on, and it's just a very pleasant place to be. And I think it's a strong community that would be willing to step up and make up for those that are kind of, for lack of a better term, ruining it for the rest of us. So, that's my comment.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
My name's Trig Davis. I live in the neighborhood. If you took some of the trees down, you could see the lake from my house. My house is on the creek. I've been in the area since '73 and on the creek since '76. I'm really here to support the dogs in the dog park. I think there's a tremendous amount of use and support in the neighborhood. I went to all the various public meetings they had about it and heard the commentary before, and I can remember being told that 95% of the people that were there were highly supportive of it being an off-leash dog park. There is a highly vocal minority that's unhappy. They're here tonight. You always hear from them, much more than you hear from the positive people. You don't hear from the people who are over there because their doctors want them over there getting exercise, all the health improvements I think it has. I've been to these things and had people come and say that South Central was opposed to it, or the Health Consortium was, or APU was. As a lot of you also know, I do the endowment work for APU. I talk to the CEOs of those organizations again and again, which would tell me that representations that were made here are false. They never took those positions. I get a little tired of it. I think you're misled, grossly misled by minority people here. And I do think you should do everything you can to have reasonable regulation and to clean things up. There was also testimony in some of those hearings from water people that it's an unusually good area in one sense, and that the nature of the bottom and the gravel and the history and the depth and the lake and the flow cleans a lot of that stuff up better than anywhere else we have. We haven't heard anybody say that tonight. I just think there's a lot of positive points. I think some of them are being missed. I don't take my dogs there generally. That's not why I'm here. I do on occasion, but I know people that take them there and take them there every day. I have a lot of neighbors that go out there and help clean that area up. There are lots of volunteers that do fecal cleanup there voluntarily. Nobody's here telling you that, so... I didn't really come to testify, but I think you're getting such poor information and so much information you're not getting, I wanted to say something. That's why I'm here. I also wanted to quickly cover, because you've asked, and this is really an APU issue. The road as it's designed does not have parking on it, because it's come up a couple times tonight. It doesn't have that. For whatever that's worth, it's clear to me the city's working on parking. They'll come up with a plan, but that road isn't going to solve that problem. And anyway, I just strongly urge you to protect that area as an off-leash dog park. You know, it's the big state, huge. I have dogs, I run dogs of mine a lot of times, 30 miles a day on weekends, with me walking. There's, you know, places to go, walking all over this state, but very few dog parks. Need to protect that one. Thanks.
Trig, quick question for you. The parking issue again on the north side, which is around the side clearly where there's going to be additional development, is there any reason from an APU standpoint to be concerned if the municipality does not provide parking over there, that parking that you build will be utilized by park users? And I'm not...
Sure.
One way or the other, but now's the time to sort of think about these things and think about it as it relates to your plans as well.
Sure. It's my understanding, and Tim's here, he's going to understand it better than I am. He's with DOWL, they're designing the road. But there's going to be a fence along that road between APU and that road. That's what I understand. Is that correct, him? Yes. So, in that sense, it probably shouldn't. Now, if we end up with some kind of building that's developed down there in the soccer field area, which is what people are really thinking about, it's impacted now, of course. There's a fence there. People go around it, whatever. Presumably, a fence will stay there. And, you know, the realistic answer is maybe people will drive all the way in there and park in there sometimes. I'm sure it happens at the Health Consortium. The time of day is maybe the big issue. You know, somebody drives in there at 10 o'clock at night and parks, and there's 400 parking spaces. It's still wrong, but I'm not sure the city wants to waste a lot of enforcement effort. More parking's needed. There's no doubt about it. It's just hard to do. There isn't much land there.
Yep.
But I think APU will be fine if that's the question. I don't think it'll really impact us.
Great.
You have the Spine Institute's there right now. There's a new OB-GYN building going in there. The hotels, there is parking all around it. And I don't see people impinging on it. I was at the Spine Institute today, and I've talked to other hotel people. I haven't heard complaints about that.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify?
My name is Hannah Davis, and I was on the committee that sort of helped with this dog park plan. And I live in the neighborhood and walk my dog every day, pick up after other dogs. And, but it's just a really important part of my life and the neighbors that do utilize the area. And I agree with that other gal that spoke that maybe the dog walkers need to pick up after other people. I do it all the time. It's not a big deal, and I'm involved in the spring cleanup. But I think that the plan that's here seems pretty good, and there's areas for people to walk without dogs and able to walk with dogs. And I just hope you support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to close the... Okay, I guess, Mr. Potter. Go ahead.
My name is Tim Potter. I'm here tonight for myself, but know quite a bit about the history, including the origination of the park. It was actually a three-party agreement. But the real reason I'm here tonight is to chat about the parking. The parking was never well thought out and was a major issue when the dog park or off-leash effort was put forward and that used started. And it was some years later that Assemblyman Dick Trainey worked with Parks and Rec to expand the parking and actually put some dedicated parking for the park there. It wasn't enough. What you need to realize is that clearly this is a park, and I am a user of the park, including off-leash use with my dogs. There's a super-high demand. That should tell you something. One of the problems is that it's, there is a high demand. We might need a few more of these around town to help spread the use. That might actually reduce the parking demand as well at this location. But it's successful. It's just not implemented and functioning very well. I'm surprised that there's not, and I saw that there was, or heard anyway, in some of the earlier testimony, that there was a memo or something from DOT about the parking. I haven't seen that, don't know what it says. But in most cases, a regional use would have to do a review. Any of the private development around the area or even institutional use has to do parking studies to figure out what its real demand is, to make sure that it's meeting that requirement. And I would say there's two important things. Find out and figure out and study how much parking is really necessary, and then make sure that the funding is available, so that it is available. That is one of the pure conflicts out there, is that people want to use the park, and there isn't adequate parking, and it wasn't considered when the park was initially developed. It's a regional draw, and in that vein, I would not have a problem having to pay an off-leash park permit fee to help offset some of the costs and especially provide some enforcement. I will tell you from personal experience, if you want to be told to F off or get, flip the bird faster than anywhere else in town, suggest to somebody who's on the APU side of the fence by the soccer fields that they should not have their dogs out there. There is an attitude, no problem, and there needs to be some adjustment of that, so that everybody in the area can kind of enjoy the facility. But that's all I have.
Mr. Spring, go ahead.
Yeah, just a real quick question. It is, seems like in my experience, it's hard to come up with a parking estimate for parks, just because the use varies so much. There's ITE, I don't think really happens.
Well, what we do actually is go out and for APU or Providence Hospital or anything else, we actually go out there and every once in a while, actually count the use for a week-long period, hour by hour, so that we actually understand how many people are actually parking there. And that would be very easy to do by watching, observing, and counting the cars that are parking out there.
I agree, except that, of course, if the lot's full and then they're parking elsewhere, it's surplus demand, then, you know, then you don't know what it is. But that would be one technique.
That would be very easy to do, to watch where people are parking.
But so, your opinion is, what's your opinion about whether or not this should be done prior to initiating the project? So, it might be the case where this one location might not be sufficient to handle the parking, and so, the plan might be somewhat flawed in that they're hoping that this area can accommodate it.
The location that they're identifying parking as the most appropriate place for a large bulk of the parking. There is some parking on-street on University Lake Drive. There will not be parking provided on the remainder of University Lake Drive, number one, to keep it as a country lane appearing road to manage in traffic control speed and the aesthetics. But also, as much as everybody thinks that their dog is under control, when a dog leaves a car and heads right out into the street, it's a problem for everybody, including the dog. And that is one of the principal reasons to not have the on-street parking that you know is going to be used by people utilizing the park with dogs, dog, dogs, dog, and kids. It's just not a healthy, safe situation. As far as do I believe that the parking should be addressed before the plan is approved? I think the plan is effectively good to go. I think that there should be an emphasis placed on it by planning and zoning, that one of the key things that the administration and Parks and Recreation needs to do is get a handle on the parking and make sure that they're not... They suggest that it's going to be based on a demand basis, that when they get to the point where they recognize that there's an issue, that they'll add more parking. My experience out there is that they need to be doing it a year or two sooner than they've reached that failure point every time.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? All right. And anyone else that needs you to come down? We've still got three public hearings after this one. Anyone else after this lady that wants to testify? You're allowed to, just come on down. Great, your last stop.
Hi, I'm Allison Kuzfox. I'm a neighbor of University Lake, and I walk there almost every day. And I just wanted to address a couple of things. And I just wanted to address the, well, a couple of things. The paved versus unpaved trails issue. I walk there almost every day, and one of the reasons I enjoy that park so much is because it has unpaved trails. I'm kind of an anatomy and biomechanics nerd, and I wear barefoot shoes. And that's one of the only places I can find trails that aren't just flat, that are not paved, that are not multi-use, that are, do have variations in terrain in my neighborhood. So I use that all the time. My husband actually works at SCF, and he walks there in between his clients almost every day as well. So he puts on his mock boots or his sneakers and goes and walks around. One other thing I was going to say is that, in terms of the parking, ANTHC and SCF have a large amount of parking there that is not really used. A lot of it after 5:00 PM, which is prime time at the dog park. Maybe there could be some kind of arrangement where there's a certain number of spaces right along the edge there where people could access the trail using that. Or maybe parking meters to offset some of the costs. That's all I have. Oh yeah, and there's no way to make poop nice. Maybe there's a way to use parking meters or something like that to fund a cleanup or volunteers. If you're willing to do that, I pick up all the time and I don't have dogs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Allison, can you spell your last name for us?
It's two words, K-O-O-S, and then space, F-O-X, like animal.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry I've arrived late, and so I'm not quite knowing what you're discussing about the parking, but I would just like to state that University Lake is a wonderful place for dog walkers and other people. I see people from the medical community who are out walking around during their lunch hours. And to me, there's nothing wrong with the way it is. Thank you. My name's Pixie CB.
I'm sorry, what, your name again?
Pixie CB.
Can you spell your last name?
S-I-E-B-E.
Great, thank you. Thank you for testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anybody at all? You guys are killing me.
My name's Christine Sekan, and I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Anchorage, Alaska. And when I first got here, there was no place to walk your dog. I was actually arrested out in Campbell Creek and was flanked by two gunned men and wound up in the United States of America versus Christine Sekan for having dogs off-leash. My dear friend, in desperation to keep me out of trouble, first went around to other dog parks in different states and then approached the city of Anchorage. And that was Kayla Epstein, who I met walking our dogs illegally out in the woods alone so that we could give ourselves exercise, and we met people, and we got healthy. And we still do that today, and here it is, how many years later. That is how important the dog parks are to the residents of Anchorage, Alaska, and how much they are admired by other towns, and how grateful we are to have them. And I think after all these years, I'm fluid in dog speak, and I can speak on behalf of the Canines of Anchorage and say to you that these parks are the happiest places in Anchorage three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And we appreciate your serious concern in regard to allowing us to walk our dogs in a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name for us?
C-I-K-A-N.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Last shot. All right, Steve, you're up.
Thank you, everybody, for providing testimony. I think I'll just make myself available for questions.
Any other questions? John, you got any? No? All good? No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would like to close the public hearing. And what's the will of the body? Mr. Spring?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the University Lake Park master plan, subject to the following conditions. And I'll just go first with the recommendation from the department, and then I would like to add several amendments so we can consider them separately, if that's okay.
That'd be great. So the main motion on the table is just approval as offered by staff, seconded by Mr. Walker. I presume you support that, but you, it sounds like you have an amendment you'd like to make.
Yes, I'd like to add a, let's float three amendments, see how they fly. Amendment number one would be to require a parking demand analysis as a, should be completed as a part of the site plan review and approval of the proposed parking lot expansion projects.
So a parking demand analysis to be completed as part of the site plan review that's conditioned upon building the parking lot? And remind me, I think I heard it from staff earlier, but the reason why a parking lot receives a site plan analysis, it's just, it's an administrative site plan analysis? Or what is that exactly?
Through the chair, it would be an administrative site plan review due to the amount of acres that they would be disturbing within a natural resource park.
And how many acres is that? So the whole, the whole park acres or the acres of a parking lot, which isn't proposed to be very big?
They're only going to be disturbing the parking lot. But, Steve, do you know exactly how many acres would be disturbed?
So what we, one acre, one acre of disturbance requires an administrative site plan review? Is that what we just heard? Okay. I'm not sure that a twenty-car parking lot takes an acre. Thank you. So, so again, so, and then Terry, you're in the queue, but what I just heard was less than an acre, there's an administrative site plan review, over an acre. So any sort of disturbance, it sounds like, I don't know, how do you do anything in a park without that? Gotcha, okay. Terry, go ahead.
Through the chair, that's, I just wish to clarify that. Almost anything that you do for grading purposes, and you would be hard-pressed to build a parking lot for under $500,000. So it's very likely that that would result in a major site plan review, coming back to planning and zoning or to the Urban Design Commission.
Okay, and is there any, is there any staff object to the... First of all, I need a second to John's motion. So the amendment to the main motion that parking demand analysis be completed as in advance of a site plan review associated with a parking lot?
I said in conjunction with...
In conjunction with. Can I get a second to that amendment to the main motion? Anyone at all? Seeing none, that motion to amend fails. Go ahead with your second amendment.
Amendment, I guess, number two, would be a review in five years. Review the University Lake Park master plan in five years in order to assess changes to user demand due to development of the APU endowment lands.
Can I get a second? Is there a second on that motion? Mr. Walker, seconded. Danielle, you wishing to speak to this?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Who would the review be by?
Well, it'd be same Parks and Recreation, yes. I'm assuming they would do it, they proposed to do it in ten years.
So would you then be, sorry to interrupt, would you be then proposing that this is a five-year plan? And then it expires in five years and a new plan is proposed then?
I'm not proposing to have a, what do you call it? What do you call that one that expires? But I guess we could make it that way, but I don't want to be that cut dry. I just want to make a recommendation that they review it in five years. Sunset provision is what you're talking about. I think that's a little bit too much, maybe. I think just to give direction that we would expect to see a review in five years would be sufficient.
Danielle, go ahead.
No longer a question, but more a comment. I think I'd be opposed to that. I think we already have items and process that address that. Right now, any community member can always fill out park report cards, so all those things will be constantly evaluated. I'm worried that if we even just informally set a five-year limit on this, then we're kind of shortchanging the plan and not letting it actually work. I think we have to, they're already shortening it itself ten years, and so I think there's already enough systems and process where people can continually send updates to Parks and Rec about problems or good things that they see about their park.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Strike?
And I'm going to concur with that comment, because you can do a review all you want in five years. To what end? What is the conclusion of that review? That review could come out with whatever determination, but there's not going to be a process there to make the change. There's not going to be a teeth to the review, other than you, unless you had some sort of sunset clause or revocation. So I would not be supporting that motion.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I don't want to argue with the commission members unnecessarily, but I think my intention is that it'd be more than a review. It'd be, we expect them to do some type of analysis that would reassess the plan and the uses of the park. The, I'm really disappointed, I guess, in that I didn't see any discussion in the plan regarding this park, which is located in the middle of a major employment area. And no discussion of the potential development that's going to occur there in the APU endowment lands. My first inclination is to say, well, go back and do it again, because you missed the point. The point is that this is, you should put it in the context of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shouldn't be totally ignored and just assume that it's going to be a dog park and that that's the main use of this park. It's part of the UMed district, and there's a great amount of potential for this to be integrated in that employment district, major employment district. In lieu of that, I don't want to disregard the good work that they did. I'm thinking, we've got a little time to wait until the development occurs there. It's not going to occur overnight, although the road project is going to happen pretty quick. And I expect there'll be at least the first phase of that development will happen following that road improvement. So we've got a little time to see what, how fast it's going to be developed, and maybe we can reassess this later. I'm okay with the way the plan is written currently for the existing conditions. But five years, it could easily, the whole area could be changed. Ten years is way too long to wait to try to reassess the plan and to really, truly integrate this as a part of the UMed major employment area.
So at this point, go ahead, Brandon, then I think we should call the question, but go ahead.
Well, I'm inclined to agree with you, John, on the points you're making. I just feel like we lack the tool to pull out of the toolbox here. So I guess I would be inclined to either try to take what you're doing to one extreme, which would be to recommend that they make this a, maybe not a five-year plan, maybe tell them to make it a seven-year plan or something like that. I don't know. I mean, split the baby a little bit and try to, you know, put something in there that... Because I do think that, I mean, they've already made, you know, there's a lot of plans underway now to develop those endowment lands, and I think five to seven years from now, it's going to look a lot different over there.
I just would, I would alert you, and again, I'm going to call the question on this in just a moment, but there is on page eighty, "UMed Continued Growth." It does talk about, I know you're not seeing it in the plan, but the plan does acknowledge that future park use could significantly increase as new activity generators bring more people to the district, adjacent APU endowment lands are built out, and road extensions create more traffic. I think, I'm going to go to Danielle, and then we're going to deal with this, but regardless of whether you have a, we have an agreement to review in five years, I think your points are very valid and ought to be considered as part of the final findings, whether it happens in five years, seven years, or ten years. So Danielle, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, I just want to say that the general themes and issues addressed in this master plan, I have, the first one references that it's a valued national area and a rapidly urbanizing area. And so I do think it was framed as a background, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Danielle. Could we please vote on the motion to amend the main motion? That motion fails. We're back to the main motion. You said you had a, you had a third one. You good?
I think I will take your suggestion and make some of these as part of finding rather as, instead of a amendment.
So I'll ask, if you, we're back to the main motion, if you'd like to speak to the main motion, you can do that. And if anyone else, you know, jump in the queue. But I got Danielle first, and then you. Is that good? Okay, Danielle.
One thing that I think is kind of a common thread here is that trails are getting more and more popular. I think it's something that's not particular to just this dog park and this, what is not just a dog park, but is a multi-use area. There's one thing that was talked about in the plan is how this is becoming a more and more popular park, and it's only natural that as new users are coming to the trail and that it's getting more use, that there's going to be more complex. But one thing that I was thinking a lot about in this is that it's not really our job as the planning and zoning to police behavior here. And we can't go out there and enforce the rules that are set. But in looking at this plan, we have to look at, does it produce good and encourage good outcomes? And so when I'm looking at this, I see that it seeks to reduce water pollution and runoff. It seeks to separate trail users to minimize that conflict. It seeks to inform trail behaviors so that those bad behaviors don't happen as often. And it also followed really ideal public process. Even people who came up here and had criticisms of behavior here and there about the plan, they said that they really appreciated how much the park incorporated the community council, incorporated other trail users into this plan, and I think that is highly encouraging to see. I think overall, it's compatible with current plans and goals in the city. And I think it seeks to take what is going to be a problem with all trails to make them better. And I think in that way, this is a very admirable plan, and I thank everyone for their involvement tonight.
Thank you, Danielle. Mr. Strike?
I'll make sure that we took special note of what Danielle said, because I think that's going to be a very good summary for our findings.
Thank you. Mr. Strike. Mr. Spring?
Yes, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I think the plan does a very good job of addressing some of the major concerns, current issues with the respect of the park, especially with regards to environmental concerns and erosion around the lake and protection of wildlife, et cetera. So I think this is really needed, and some of the solutions are going to be very helpful for that. I would also state that the plan should recognize, and does to some extent, but maybe not to the extent that I would like, that this is a multi-use area. It is a municipal park, it's not just a dog park, it's a multi-use area. There's more, there's lots of users, skiers, mountain bikers, or bicycle riders who use those trails. And more and more, it's going to be used by people just who want to go out and take a noontime stroll. The, University Lake Park needs to be very clear that it's located, like I said before, in the middle of a major employment area, the UMed district. There's one of three, there's not many in town. It's actually the second largest, I think, currently in terms of total employment, not counting the students that go to school nearby. It's huge. The future revisions of the plan, I would recommend, should take more consideration the context of where the park's located in this major employment district. And perhaps try to do a better job of creating a park that can be used more than just by dog park users, but by the workers who will be... users, but by the workers who will be employed in the area around that park. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. I guess I would just add that, you know, we heard testimony here from the community council and others supporting the master plan, but placing an emphasis on how the park gets managed and how enforcement happens. That's always a challenge, and it's a challenge when budgets are tight. And I also just wanted to state that we spend a lot of time listening to conditional uses for resource extraction, and I guess I just wanted to state that here we have a gravel pit that has become a really nice amenity for a very growing urban part of town, and I find that maybe that appeases for all those conditional uses we grant to mine out our areas. There is reclamation, if done well. So with that, could we please vote on the University Lake master plan? And that plan is approved. Thank you for your participation. Good job, Parks and Rec, and Duane Municipality, and those of you who participated here this evening. We ready to go into the next one, or do people need a break? Good? Three-minute break while people clear out. Thanks. Okay, I'm going to ask those of you that are not sticking around, if you could take your conversations out into the hall, that would be great. Those of you sticking around for other cases, we're going to keep it rolling. So next up, case 2017-3, request to modify the special limitations and assembly ordinance 2009-39, which approved a rezone of four parcels from R1A to R4SL containing an effective clause, so on and so forth. 13.7 acres, generally located north of O'Malley, east of Independence Drive, and west of Lake Otis Parkway. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner is seeking to build a senior housing development. Development of the property would require amendment to the special limitations on the zoning. The assembly ordinance with the special limitations is found on page 40 of your packets. It's... The applicant included it as part of his narrative, and I didn't print out another copy to add just to try and save him on paper a little bit. But page 40 is the existing special limitations. The Abbott-Luke Community Council passed a resolution supporting this application and the amendments proposed by the petitioner, and that resolution is found on page 55 of your packet. The department is recommending approval of this... These amendments to the special limitations. The draft assembly ordinance is on page eight of your packets. The department finds that the nine standards of approval for a rezone have been met, specifically Anchorage 2020 policies 5, 7, 9, 12, 34, and 61. And the special... The existing special limitations on the property are... Obviously, they're too restrictive and specifically tied to an outdated site plan. Also, the special limitations are based on the old code. Amending these SLs is necessary for any development of the property. New proposed... The new proposed SLs in this draft ordinance on page eight, they limit the density... Residential density to 30 dwelling units per acre, and they prohibit commercial uses as well as manufactured home communities. And my last comment is just that Tom Davis asked me to put in a plug for him that this rezoning is consistent with the 2040 plan. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions, and the petitioner is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Question from Mr. Spring.
Sorry, I was out on your first part of your presentation. Correct me if I already mentioned this, but the... I think in your staff report, you mentioned that there could be access from O'Malley. Did you check that, see if that was possible?
Yes. There... The state responded, and as well as the Municipal Traffic Engineering Division, that they do have access to O'Malley, and then full access on Independence.
Oh, they will have full access to O'Malley?
Yeah. They're going to... The Municipal Traffic Engineer is seeking to push that access a little further to the north edge of the site on Independence, but full access is allowed under the existing TIA and then the updated TIA, because there have been two.
Okay. Well, that'll solve a lot of problems. I thought there was quite a bit of drop-off from the proposed reconstruction of O'Malley to that site. I thought it was a lot higher, because the dips down quite a bit and then comes back up. I thought the reconstruction would require that it would be high... There'd be quite a bit of elevation difference between the road and the property.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you may be right. I don't know anything about that, just that the state and Municipal Traffic Engineer have confirmed that an access will be allowed in the existing location, and what is the other thing that they said? I can't recall.
There's an existing location for access? I mean, they already have a driveway permit there?
Yeah. So the whole road project accounts for this. It's in the plans.
Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Would your evaluation of this request be any different? Were it not being proposed as a senior housing project?
No, it would not. That's a very astute point, Ms. Barker. You know, this is really a housekeeping matter, because the existing special limitations are unworkable for anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Any other questions for staff? And just to be clear, Mr. McLaughlin, you are not proposing to keep any of the prohibited uses as special limitations, or... I mean, you referred us to the Abbott-Luke Community Council resolution that suggested keeping those, but you've not proposed keeping those. Is that right?
I don't think I understood the question. Let me respond, Mr. Chair. My understanding is that the... So I've read the applicant's application, and they have some self-imposed special limitations that they're proposing. It's in their narrative. That is what they presented to the community council, and the community council's resolution supported those and recommended approval based on that. And the planning department and the commission can't recommend anything less restrictive than what the applicant has offered themselves in their application. And so we're just going along with this sort of symbiotic process.
But you're simplifying it in the proposed... Or it's their proposed ordinance, basically 30 dwelling units and no commercial uses or manufactured home communities.
Yeah. I had to, because the two codes don't match up, and the laundry list that was there before doesn't match our current R4 type of zoning, and so it does work out with the ordinance that I've drafted. I grouped them all together as commercial uses. That's what was remaining, and then the manufactured home community.
Great, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. We'll start off with the petitioner. As a reminder, you have 10 minutes, and part of that time can be reserved for rebuttal. Others wishing to testify, if you're a member of a group, you receive five minutes, and individuals, three minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. First off, would like to thank planning staff for their efforts in shepherding us through this process, and yourselves likewise, for reading through 61 pages of excitement over the holiday break. So, thank you very much. I'll jump right into it. The primary criteria for approval of the zone change is item number one, "The rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and shall promote the public health, safety, and general welfare." So rather than discussing the specifics of the project, I'd like to address how it meets those and why this is important for the community. First, and I can direct you to page 36 of the document provided by staff, and I'll kind of run through those bullet points. First off, it provides housing options, market rate housing options that are not currently available in the Anchorage market. And in comparison to the previously contingently approved project, it would have a reduction in traffic of roughly 32% compared to the previous project, reduction in parking of roughly 50%, reduction in overall massing, conceptually 10% less. Heights, which were previously slated to go to five stories, 55 feet, would be reduced to four stories. Overall population density on the site, notwithstanding the unit density increase, population density is estimated to decrease as the smaller household size of the proposed use. In addition, sunlight is obviously an issue to be considered here. We've thought through that thoroughly. Three of the sides of this property are either major arterial roads or neighborhood collector roads. The fourth adjacent piece is a 100- to 200-foot buffer zone of open space before any other property is impacted. That gives at least 125 feet between any building that could be built and any adjacent use, any adjacent residential use. In addition, both noise and crime would be expected to be reduced when compared to a typical multifamily use, which was previously anticipated. That's specific to this site. There are broader reasons why this is of utmost importance, and this is what brought us here to Anchorage to pursue this type of a project to begin with. From 2000 to 2010, Alaska had the fastest-growing seniors population, 65-plus, of any state in the country, actually four times the national average. They grew 54% with the national average at 14%. Going forward, 2010 to 2020 projections, per U.S. Census projections, that is expected to increase to 75% growth over this decade going to 2020. So you have huge seniors population growth. And looking at how that need is being met, there are really three larger-scale... And I'm going to focus on assisted living specifically, assisted living projects in the municipality. One is the Pioneer Home, built in 1982. One is the Providence Horizon House, built in 92, and the last one is Marlow Manor over off Muldoon. That was built in 97. Since the latest completion of those projects, population has more than doubled from 35,000 seniors residents to 75,000 seniors residents. How is that need being met by... In the Anchorage community? So we recognize a need for seniors housing and assisted living specifically. We had an opportunity originally to purchase a 16-bed facility, which is how the need has been met over the previous 15 years, is an expansion of these smaller, five-bed, smaller operated facilities. In coming up and looking at that facility, it was really disheartening to see the conditions that are forced upon some of our seniors population, and which is a vulnerable population in that assisted living cohort. The particular project we were looking at was a duplex specifically built for assisted living, notwithstanding it was two stories, five bedrooms on either side, anticipating eight residents on either side. The residents... At least two or three of the residents would have to go up and downstairs on a daily basis for their meals, or would remain in their bedrooms all day long. The common space for the particular building was a family room, dining room, and kitchen area, all sharing the same space. So effectively, these residents in these homes have their option of being in their bedroom or the family room. No open space outside to really make use of, and really a limited quality of life. The proposed project really looks to provide a much-needed service to the community, providing our own transportation to bring residents to and from doctor's appointments and other appointments necessary, as well as full-time activity staff to allow broader engagement with the community, full-time nursing staff to have professionals overseeing the care of the individual residents, professional chefs providing a variety of meals and ensuring effective nutrition of the residents. In addition, having large corridors held within a building and a variety of different public spaces within the building, or common spaces, I should say, within the building, provide a much higher quality of life for these residents. And if you've been to these facilities on a limited basis here in Anchorage and in other communities in the lower 48, it really has the opportunity to take the transition from living in your home to transitioning to seniors' care. It has the ability to dramatically improve the quality of life of these at-risk seniors' residents, as opposed to diminishing the quality of their life as they're forced into the only housing that's available at this point. At this point, I'd just like to open it up to any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. You have about three minutes for rebuttal. Any questions for the petitioner? Oh, and I was asked, could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, Brandon Perry.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Perry? I had a question, and I think what you're discussing here definitely is needed, but I think that the proposed zoning doesn't restrict the parcel to be utilized for senior housing or assisted living in any way. It simply says 30 units an acre. And so as we're evaluating this, we need to evaluate it based on what you could build there. If you could build 30 units an acre, times the number of acres, I mean, you're getting to 390 units, if my math is right, versus the 220-something that were proposed there under the old SLs. So I just... I want to reconcile what we're really approving here is not assisted living, you know, is not your specific site plan, but is a rezone that, you know, effectively allows you to do what you want to do, but in the event that you don't do it, allows something quite different as well. I wonder if you had thoughts to that.
Yes, and we thought through that and considered the broader basis of community concerns on that. And if you'll turn to page... 30 in the package. It compares the subject use to several other one vacant and one currently constructed project in the immediate vicinity within the community. And in either event, there's virtually immediately adjacent vacant land that has the density of 30 dwelling units, which is packed more densely into the neighborhood. In addition, just north, there's another community with 35 density units of constructed multifamily. And so we voluntarily layered in a restriction for density against the recommendation of the planning staff to ensure that what actually goes in here is not going to be R4, high R4 density. It's going to be common to what's going on in the immediate community.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Strick.
Yes, a quick question, Chair. Is any... In looking at this, I know in the location, I think we've... I didn't quite catch what the staff had said regarding the improvements to O'Malley Road that are scheduled.
Yeah.
How much of... Is any portion of this land being taken by the state for that project?
Yes. Roughly two acres have been taken, public use easement across the property of, I think actually, 62,000 square feet, so that puts it at an acre and a half.
Does that change your total acreage in this presentation?
It does not.
Okay. So yours is net remaining acreage?
So it's a public use easement, so the title still remains in the current landowner's name, so that doesn't impact density, the density calculation in that case.
Okay. And the ingress egress off to O'Malley Road, is that...
Yes. It's right in, right out only with a concrete divider down O'Malley Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, and Mr. Walker. You're out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
You're out, okay. You want to...
Yes, I do. Okay, so I wasn't aware that the road design was right in... Had a barrier there.
Yes.
That's the current design?
Correct.
So it's just going to be right in, right out? It's also going to be right in, right out at Independence Road?
Correct. So at Independence, where Independence intersects O'Malley?
Yes, right.
It's right in, right out. It's right-in, right-out. There is, however, a left-in coming off of, you will be able to make a left turn coming eastbound on O'Malley onto Independence.
So that's a left turn?
Yes. Our primary ingress will be a left turn off of O'Malley onto Independence, followed by an immediate right turn into the property off of Independence.
So you're somehow going to prevent left turns coming out of Independence Drive?
Correct.
What's that? There'll be a median, but it won't be a median because you'll be able to make left turn going eastbound. So how's there a median? There's a turn pocket and...
Correct.
That's it? I never heard of such a thing. But, okay, so nevertheless, though, coming out of there, that property, and you want to go, say you want to go eastbound on O'Malley, for some reason, I don't know why you'd want to do that, but...
Hiking.
What?
You want to go hiking.
You want to go hiking or something. Probably not that many turns, I guess, right? Going that way? Yeah, the dog park, you want to go to the dog park. So the only way to get out of there would be to go up to Ridgemont then, or up Independence Drive to Abbott. And of course, Ridgemont is a local street and with lots of driveways and fairly small lot widths, which you never want to have a mix of through traffic and that kind of configuration. It presents some problems. I guess I didn't... I think I'm okay, I'm okay with the senior housing, because I agree the number of trips are going to be reduced over what's currently allowed. But I have some concerns regarding the 30 dwelling units, which can be built as just standard multifamily. In that case, there would be substantial amount of traffic, trip generation from that lot, and there could be a lot of cut-through, some cut-through traffic, although we don't know because there's no TIA, and we don't have that information, but there'd be more cut-through traffic through Ridgemont, which would be a bad thing. So I'm not really posing a question for you, I guess, but...
I was going to just ask you for your question, Mr. Spring.
There's no question, really. I'm just going and rambling on.
I got other people in the queue, so...
But I think, you think it could be handled with a TIA somehow?
Well, let me respond to that, as we have thought through that. And thought through that is to the best, our goal is to provide the best project that can be built at this location. There are some variables that are beyond our control that limit what can be built. It would be ideal to be able to have a left out of Independence onto O'Malley. That being said, we are considering the idea and have had initial discussions with staff relating to the ability to do a swap of a certain portion of wetlands, to allow an ingress egress location on the far east portion of, I'm going to say, the northeast portion of our property across the open space, and trading open space on our property for open space that is owned by the adjacent community. They're the ones that are primarily going to be affected, and we are considering the option of rerouting traffic if we can get access from them to avoid traffic through their neighborhood.
Through the chair, then that would connect with Ridgemont near Lake Otis.
Yes, it would connect at Ridgemont after all of the houses.
Yes.
So you wouldn't be passing any homes at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, then Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yeah, a lot of the case for doing this is kind of based on the good of putting a senior, you know, senior housing facility on this site. And I see, like, I see Cooley's name in here, and I know Harold Green has owned the property since the dawn of time, and I don't think either of those people are qualified to do this. Who, you said "we" earlier, can you just tell me a little bit about, I mean, this is obviously a pretty big project?
Yes, so I'm leading the development team. Perspective partners in the development team are two groups. One is Legend Design and Development. The other one is Perry Homes, which are development companies owned by family members of mine. They both have ownership in, have developed and have ownership in seniors' housing assets, both assisted living and seniors' apartments, recently developed in the last five years with substantial financial backing to tackle a project of this size.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm holding in my hands an email this morning from Randy Ribble from the Traffic Department. He says, quote, "Depending on location, a full-access driveway will most likely be approved by the municipality for Independence Drive." So I just wanted to clarify that from this site to Independence, they'll have full access. And then, on page 58 of your packets, I've included a neighboring parcel owned by Spinel Homes. It has a special limitation for 30 DUA, so this number tracks with the adjacent parcel on the other side of Independence. And I, you know, I just also would like to raise a sort of big-picture sort of comment that, you know, looking at the merits of cleaning up the special limitations on this existing R4 zoning, I think that's what the real issue here is, and that, you know, overly burdensome special limitations could have, you know, downstream effects. Really, you know, these are site plan review, some of these questions seem to be related to a future site plan. It's very likely that there'll be a major site plan review performed by this commission in the future, project is successful, but we have all the residential design standards in the new code that we didn't have in the old code that tries to account for, you know, impacts on neighboring properties, as well as there is a design standard in Chapter 7 that allows the municipal traffic engineer to conduct the, or to require a traffic impact analysis before any development is proposed. So I can only judge that they'll do their jobs and that they wouldn't allow greater number or higher ADT than what the adjacent roads can support. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Any other questions for the petitioner before we go to public hearing? Seeing none, you have three minutes for rebuttal, so we'll wait and see what comes up during public hearing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to testify on this case? Anyone at all? Anyone planning to testify? Okay, come on down.
Hi, my name is Tim Mannwaring, M-A-N-W-A-R-I-N-G, and I hadn't intended on testifying tonight, but I just wanted to bring up, I was able to meet with the petitioner previously because I live directly adjacent to the property on Ridgemont Drive, and I just wanted to share with you this evening that my major concern is additional traffic on Ridgemont Drive, which has kind of been addressed, and it sounds like from staff that the state or the city is going to have full access off of Independence Drive. I've discussed the project with them. I'm in support of that development. I know that land is going to be developed at some point, and I'm all in favor of responsible development. And so, I like what they're doing and what they're proposing. Again, my only concern is that we don't put additional traffic on Ridgemont Drive. We know from when Ridgemont Drive wasn't completed all the way out to O'Malley, we saw that what traffic, the additional traffic, that everybody used Ridgemont Drive because it's the last available access up to Lake Otis. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again because it's dangerous, and it's not what we intended when we moved and built that community. So, thank you.
Thank you. You have a question for Mr. Spring. Go ahead, John.
Well, I'm afraid that there probably will be more traffic on Ridgemont Drive. I don't know how it will be avoided. We don't, of course, we don't have the information from a traffic impact analysis, but just to clarify a little bit, yes, there'll be access off of Independence Drive, like you said, but if you're trying to go eastbound or go to Lake Otis, for instance, you come down Independence Drive and you want to turn left on O'Malley, well, you won't be able to do that. So if you want to go to Lake Otis, the fastest way from this property would be go north on Independence, take Ridgemont, and then turn off left going down, or left or right and take Lake Otis. That, to me, seems to be the fastest way. I don't know if you agree that might be a shortcut to that?
Well, that's a shortcut, but I may have misunderstood. I thought I understood that there'd be full access from Independence onto O'Malley, left and right. No?
The only information that I have with me is that from the property to Independence, people will be able to go either right or left, but from Independence onto O'Malley, I think that, I mean, this is what I think some of the, Commissioner Springs has had comments related to.
Sure. Well, I guess I'm just here to tell you that that concerns me greatly, that all that traffic could be run right up Ridgemont Drive, so. And it's not, this probably isn't the right place for that, but I just want to encourage that, whatever possible, if there, if anything we could do to help relieve that traffic on Ridgemont Drive, it'd be appreciated, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate your testimony. Just to be clear, I mean, we're looking at a similar zoning change to a similar zoning change, and clearly there's something that would be allowed currently, but I think, as Mr. McGlaughlin has stated, there is, I think, most situations that would be contemplated with a parcel this large would be required to go through a site plan review, a major site plan review, which would also involve a public hearing. And the trigger for that, Francis, is number of buildings more than its number of units, though. So they could do one or two very large buildings and not trigger their major site plan review, just to be clear, right?
Correct. Any development of the property over, like, three units is going to require them to comply with the residential design standards, but the multiple structures on one track site requirements, that if you have three or more principal structures and you have up to 30 dwelling units is an administrative site plan review, 31 or more dwelling units is a major site plan review. So that's where my comment, that they're very likely to have a major site plan review.
But just to set the record straight, if the petitioner, if the rezone was approved and the petitioner came in tomorrow and said we wanted to do the first phase and it's a 150-unit building, would there be a major site plan review required?
No, they'd have to comply with the residential design standards, but the major site plan review is only kicked in if they have three buildings of greater than, 31 or greater units.
There may be a TIA required, but that does not mean that there'd be an opportunity for public testimony. So there's some, depending on what the action is, there's some protection, but not 100% protection. So I just wanted to sort of fully disclose that as we move forward here.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening. My name is Valerie Card King, and I have a concern about the traffic also, especially with the family-oriented community that we are. There's a lot of people that walk their dogs, play with their children, do a lot of activities on Independence Drive, and also I live on Ridge Park. I'm worried about that traffic running through because we also intersect to the grade school, the middle school, over there on Lake Otis, so we're already getting traffic from that. So I'm concerned about Ridgemont, Ridge Park, and Spring Valley, I think it's Spring Valley, getting that traffic just zooming. We already have cars just zipping through there. I also want to mention, he had said something about a four-story building. All of those homes that are already established on Ridgemont, they're going to be cast in a shadow, from the shade in the summertime, and I think their view of the mountains is going to be obliterated. So, that's all I wanted to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all?
JR Wilcox. And just wanted to provide a little bit more context. I'm involved in a very, very similar facility construction right now. What, Campbell Creek House is also open in addition to the other three facilities listed by the petitioner. I'm involved in building a very similar facility. In fact, I'm out with the petitioner about six months ago, and I know of a couple other groups looking at this. So that issue of senior care, this isn't the only development that's currently being contemplated, but anyway, I'll see you next issue because I'm worried about the greenhouses.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Okay, petitioner, you, Mr. Perry, you have roughly three minutes left for rebuttal.
Great. I appreciate very much the feedback from Mr. Mannwaring and, remind me of her name, and from Valerie. We are concerned about the issue, we're concerned about, we're paying attention to how to mitigate that as best we can. If I remember right, Valerie, are you on the homeowners association there?
Yes.
Yes, and I've reached out to the property management company to try and get contact information to further this discussion. I also reached out proactively, I, Mr. Mannwaring contacted me. I proactively set an appointment when I was in town to hear his concerns and to do what we can to mitigate those concerns. And we do have intention of getting with HOA and making an attempt to do a land swap of open space for open space, so they net the same open space but run the, an alternate road through there. If there's any way for us to do something like that, we intend on doing so, and we're already proactive doing that, which I think is representative of what our broader intentions are to take into account and be considerate of the impact on the immediate adjacent property owners. So, nothing more?
Great, thank you. Any final questions for Mr. Perry? Last call there. Okay, seeing none, thank you for your testimony and for your project proposal. The public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of the body? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I move to recommend approval of the rezoning to R4 multifamily mixed-use district with the following special limitations. A, the maximum number of dwelling units per acre across the district is 30. Change that to across the track is 30.
I think it's, it may be multiple tracks, which is, I'm not sure.
It says track one in the...
It's a one-track right now?
It is one-track.
I'm going to, I just want to get this right, so go ahead, Mr. Perry. But current, currently, that it's one track. I think I just actually signed this plat the other day. It just became effectuated. So it is one-track right now. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Spring.
And B, commercial uses of manufactured home communities are prohibited.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, seconded by Mr. Walker. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think there is a need for senior housing, obviously, in this town, and it's very beneficial for seniors to be able to live in the town where their family is and not have to move out of state to go to a nursing home. I've recently had a lot of experience with nursing homes, and it'd be very stressful. I think this would be a very good project. It looks as if the buffering is sufficient from this property. There's a nice greenbelt to the north, and I don't see any impacts on the surrounding areas. It's very well-sighted, I think, for this use. The, I do have a concern regarding the pass-through, or the pass-through traffic on Ridgemont and other local residential streets in the Independence Park area, and my finding is, pertains to the traffic impact analysis that will be performed as a part of this development.
the traffic impact analysis that will be performed as a part of this development. And I would recommend that the, as part of this finding, that the traffic engineer seriously consider that impact and means to mitigate it through the TIA process.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? Okay, please vote. That request to rezone is recommended to the Assembly for approval, as proposed. I think I would also add some additional findings to what Mr. Spring said, and that is that the proposal is consistent with the requirements for rezoning. I think that when we have limited amounts of R4, and R4 can be considered for, you know, very high intensity, but it also is the needed zoning when you want to do the type of development like is proposed here. And I think having that R4 distributed in different parts of the community, but also taking in the surrounding neighborhood and environment in the development process is an important thing to do. In other words, we don't expect you to do what you would do in midtown with R4 here in South Anchorage, and that's the testimony and the couple of limitations I think that provide that opportunity. Danielle?
I'd just like to add a couple additional findings. One, I think it's important to note that this did have community support. I also think it's important to note that it does have compatible density in the area and that it is going to be on a transit-supported development corridor, which will further help or ease any negative effects of higher density in the area. And also, while in general the community does have a greater need for more aging-related home facilities, I think it's important to note that the existing special limitations were unworkable, no matter what the actual intended use would be. And so in order to get this to be developed land, which we need to develop more of our undeveloped land, these special limitations need to be removed.
Thank you for those findings, and thank you to those that testified, and petitioner. We have two additional cases before we go, at least public hearing cases. We'll take a quick five, and then we'll try to get to both of those. Oh, you good to go? All right? Good? Everybody good? All right, let's try the greenhouse case. DVR'd the game, by the way, so you just blew it for me, thanks. That's all right. It'll be too late anyway. So Case 2017-1, the municipality of Anchorage Planning Department, ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Title 21 for, I'll just say for farmers' markets, and let staff provide the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Office of Economic and Community Development through the planning department has sought the means to support, encourage, and increase the local production, consumption, and sale of food and produce. This will assist in reducing Anchorage's dependence on food and produce imports and to minimize the impact of supply chain disruption during times of emergency. As part of this effort, it was determined that tax amendments to Title 21 would contribute toward this goal. Sections one and three of the draft ordinance before you modifies municipal code to allow farmers' markets as an allowed use in the PR and CEPR zoning districts. Current efforts are underway by the planning department to rezone all dedicated parks from PLI or PLIP to PR. Without this amendment, farmers' markets operating in to-be rezoned areas would no longer be considered an allowed use once rezoned. Section two of the draft ordinance modifies Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21.06.030D6 height exemptions to allow rooftop greenhouses to exceed the maximum allowable height of the district by no more than fifteen feet within select zoning districts. Single-family and two-family dwelling units within these zoning districts would be excluded. This amendment will incentivize the use of rooftops for growing food and will give a use to typically unused space. Lastly, section four of the draft ordinance will add a legal definition of greenhouse to Chapter 14 of Title 21. The Office of Economic and Community Development, along with planning, recommend approval of this ordinance.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, there's a comment by the Ron Wild structural plan engineer regarding the structural issues for greenhouses on flat roofs. I didn't see any comment on your staff report regarding that. Do you agree with that, or is that somehow addressed?
All of those comments would be addressed because each greenhouse will require a building permit. So they're going to go through a structural review, they're going to go through an electrical review, plumbing, so on and so forth. So all of those issues will be addressed through the building permit.
Follow-up question, please. Would marijuana grow operations be allowed in the greenhouse?
There's nothing saying they won't be. It, as long as they're in the appropriate zoning district and abide by all the limitations of the special land use permit and go through the appropriate approval process.
So you could have a grow operation, right, overlooking your backyard then? Possibly, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Well, you might want to, lest we think that you can have a commercial grow operation now on every rooftop in Anchorage, there are some limitations.
What is it? Say, I live in back, say there's a B1A, B1B in my neighborhood.
No, that's a different zoning. Yeah, I agree.
And it's next to residential district.
Yeah.
And they put a greenhouse there and they have a grow operation.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's not every parcel within your neighborhood is allowed to have a commercial, or a commercial grow operation.
It's not allowed in the residential.
Yeah. Okay, and other questions for staff before we, Mr. Strike, go ahead.
How was the fifteen feet derived? What was the impetus behind identifying that as the overall increased height?
Through the chair, Commissioner, fifteen feet for a commercial greenhouse is akin to eight foot for a residential house wall height. So if you were to build a large commercial greenhouse, it would be a max height of fifteen feet from the floor to the peak of the roof.
But we're not building a large commercial greenhouse, per se. We're looking at an adaptation to allow an increase in building height to, you know, above and beyond what is allowed in a particular area. I understand, you know, if a commercial, we've got a plot of land and we're building it, but we're looking at adding this on top of an existing structure, or quite possibly build a structure that might also then support this, that could then exceed, you know, you could have a twenty-foot-tall greenhouse theoretically.
Through the chair, Commissioner, you are correct. You could put a commercial greenhouse on top of a large, say, office building within a B3 district. And that is the intent of the ordinance and the intent of where we'd like to go with this, to increase food production within Anchorage. Not only just putting small ten-by-ten greenhouses on buildings, but also doing large-scale greenhouses.
Is there a particular project or need that came forth that directed us to, or directed you to look at this as an option? Is there a particular parcel in question that is looking for this type of variance?
Through the chair, Commissioner, to my knowledge, there are no projects in the pipeline as of now. However, I will say that representatives from the mayor's administration did meet with the Alaska Food Policy Council last spring, and this was one topic that they were very interested in and that they would like to see, and they thought would be a very easy way to increase food production within Anchorage and make use of unused space.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Danielle?
Was there any discussion about what this would do as far as blocking sunlight to other neighborhoods or kind of that regard? I know some greenhouses, light goes through, but it doesn't really have any reference that what type of materials it needs to be.
Through the chair, Commissioner, yes, we did have that discussion. It depends on the size of the greenhouse, and it depends on which zoning district and the density of housing that is in that district. Typically with greenhouses with gabled roofs, the shading that you would see or blocking of daylight would be extremely minimal. In addition to a greenhouse being transparent, just the angles of the gabled roof don't necessarily block that much daylight. No, that may not be the best answer for you, but we did look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious what other models from other winter cities you might have consulted in coming up with this proposal?
Through the chair, Commissioner, thank you for the question. Montreal is actually one of the leaders. They have many rooftop greenhouses. This has also been used in Detroit, Milwaukee, Seattle, Portland, New York City, many northern climate cities. It's proven very effective. It is an efficient way, energy-wise, to put a rooftop greenhouse versus a standalone greenhouse. Your heating costs, you can tap into existing water utilities, electrical. Very efficient for a winter city in a northern climate.
So in your estimation, what you've done is you've created a model from a compendium of other best practices.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Strike?
You know, and I'm looking at the definition of greenhouse, a structure with walls and roof made chiefly of transparent material such as glass, polycarbonate, or similar materials for the purpose of growing plants in regulated climatic conditions. That's walls and roof. And I just, I just have to think that you go up fifteen feet on just about any structure in Anchorage, you say it's going to be permitted. I'm just looking at the wind load and how you're going to engineer around the wind load in most or many of the areas in this town, but that's an engineering issue. And so I raise that as a concern. And the second one is, I'm still, can't quite get my hands around the fifteen feet. So I'll leave it at that.
Is there a specific question or just, okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Strike. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. As mentioned previously, representatives of groups, five minutes for testimony, individuals, three minutes. Keep your eye on the clock here, it'll turn yellow when you have a minute left, and please state and spell your name for the record.
I'm JR Wilcox, WIL, COX. So I'm the current leader of a thing called Baxter Senior Living, so we're trying to develop a three-story assisted living facility near the intersection of Baxter and Tudor. In our architecture, we have planned glass greenhouses on the top of the facility. That may have been one element amongst many that concentrated minds on the subject because we would, we wouldn't be able to accommodate those with our current height limitation. So in terms of the question about is there a specific facility planning to do this, mine would be such a facility. These would be approximate eight-foot glass greenhouses. The primary purpose wouldn't be so much commercial food production, but allowing a nice amenity for seniors on a walkable deck. So if there are any, you know, specific questions, how it affects a specific facility, then I'm happy to help, but anyway, I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Mr. Wilcox, in your example, those are, it's a fairly large lot, and those are large buildings, not likely to sort of interfere with property lines, I'm guessing, or?
No, sir. No, this is all within the existing building footprint. I mean, we could build a building under current planning and zoning with no greenhouses on top. It's just right on the deck, it goes higher than it would be with a glass structure which would allow light to pass through it.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else? It's a race.
I'm Jerri Anne Lauther. And I've been part of the Muldoon Farmers Market for the last couple of years, and we've been planning all along to move it to Muldoon Town Square Park as soon as it's built, and we were a little alarmed to see that suddenly that needed a permission. And I believe you have things under control, and I want to thank you for taking care of that, but we really are planning to move that market to the park, and if there's any problem, let us know.
Thanks, Jerri Anne. I think this would cover you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony.
Hi again, I'm Paul Stang with the University Area Community Council. We'd like to speak about this provision. The UACC urges the muni to divide this case into two provisions. Both parts focus on ways to make food more accessible in Anchorage, which is needed and commendable. However, the two provisions are fundamentally different in that farmers' markets are temporary for a day or two and then move out of the park. While rooftop greenhouses are permanent, the height exemption has strong implications for neighbors, especially with respect to sun shading. We wouldn't want problems with one to affect the other. So at the UACC, we address them as two separate issues. By a vote on January 4th, we were unanimous in our support for the farmers' market, so we'll see, need to say no more about that. It's a great idea. While the majority of the UACC members at the meeting were supporting the provision of rooftop greenhouse height exemptions, some were opposed because of the substantial concerns about sun shading on neighboring residents' properties. We also have concerns that there's an aesthetic issue. This is the most prominent part of the building, and we trust that the muni would assure that over time it remains functional. We don't have plastic sheeting flapping in the breezes. We don't have what was once transparent plastic now faded by discoloration by the sun and what have you. That's a critical part, and that they be used as greenhouses and not for other purposes. It says so, they can't be used for storage whatsoever, but somehow those things tend to happen, so I think the muni would have to be pretty firm about that. So we strongly urge the muni to add a provision that, with respect to sun shading, that none of these greenhouses would create a sun shading issue for existing properties. Without such a provision, we would be opposed to such greenhouses. We thank you for your consideration, and we trust the muni will find ways to modify the provisions to resolve our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Question for you from Mr. Spring.
Yeah, did you discuss the possibility of marijuana grow operations in a greenhouse?
We did not.
Where do you think, well, I guess I wouldn't ask you to speculate, but in personal opinion?
Well, I can speak as an individual rather than as the head of the UACC Community Council President. And my own view is that unless it's specified, you could surely expect that to occur.
And follow-up, one quick one. Did anybody discuss like privacy issues with rooftop greenhouses and adjacent to single-family and?
It, no, it did not come up. The key concern was the sun shading issues, which were brought up earlier.
What's the zoning in the vast majority of the university district?
I think it's R2 and R3 primarily. And we're getting requests for changes from R3 to RO, and the reason for those is that people want to build office buildings. And it says RO, but they do, they, they're interested in the O portion.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing, Greg, you got, is closed. You got?
Question for the staff.
Yep.
I note, this is a question for the staff, and I note that we have three amendments before us. Is it, can these amendments be taken separately? Or do we have to vote on the entirety of the?
You can, I mean, I'll answer that. I think that you can, you can vote on them separately. You can, we can go section. You can, you can, I, I mean, I'll answer that. I think that you can, you can vote on them separately. You can, we can go section by section if that's your desire.
I, I guess I would propose that to the group as a possible, as an option.
Yeah, I think the, that person making the motion can either make a full motion and someone can vote to divide it or bifurcate it, or someone can offer it one at a time. What's the will of the body? I heard a great, a great proposed strategy to get through this. But I need someone to do it. Can I have a one? Mr. Spring.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to make a motion to bifurcate it by section.
That's fine.
First motion is to recommend approval of Section 1 regarding the greenhouse, or excuse me. I didn't state exactly what it says here.
You want to take one and three at the same time?
Farmers' market use in a PR district.
You want to take three at the same time?
Excuse me?
Three. Section three is just the Eagle River parks as well, is that right?
Yes.
All right.
Section three is.
So is that okay to, to have a motion to adopt Sections 1 and Sections 3 as presented by staff, seconded by Mr. Strike? Is that okay by you? Okay, Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I, I will support the motion. Makes a lot of sense. This is just a housekeeping issue. And as the person testified, there, and we all know that there's a proposal for a farmers' market in the Muldoon Park, and they can't do it without this zoning change, so let's get, help them out.
Let's help them out. Call the question, please. Let's, let's vote. Motion passes.
All right. Second motion is to recommend approval of Section 2, which allows exceptions to the height limitations in various districts to allow a maximum of no more than 15 feet.
Okay, could you?
I will make an amendment.
Is that, your main motion is simply as, as written? Can I?
And I will make an amendment.
It's seconded by Ms. Bailey.
As soon as they're seconded.
Okay, if you, if you'd like to, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to add an amendment that would prohibit the grow, marijuana grow operations in the greenhouses that are located on rooftops that this height exception applies to. Now I'd like to speak to that.
Wait, what's your, what's your amendment? Did I miss that?
I thought I did pretty good the first time. Now I have to try to do it again. That would prohibit the marijuana grow operations on, in greenhouses located on rooftops that exceed the district by allowable height by more than 15 feet in the districts that are specified in this section.
Uh, I don't have a second yet. I'd need a second. Mr. Walker. And then Mr. Walker's in the queue, but if you want to speak to it first, go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Well, I actually, you mind if I say something real quick before you go? So I seconded, just to throw my suggestion in, which is, I was thinking of actually, rather than excluding marijuana, maybe we include food only or something like that, so that we're not specifically targeting the marijuana group, but we're just saying, hey, look, the impetus behind this is food. It's for food. Something along those.
I, that's exactly my intent for this amendment, because the discussion was about the need for food improvement, security. So marijuana isn't exactly food, although it leads to food eating, I heard, but consumption, but.
I'm going to go to Ms. Bailey and then to Ryan. Go ahead, Danielle.
Um, I would vote against this amendment. I think if we're going to allow greenhouses on roofs and to not allow someone to grow their flowers that they seasonally need to upkeep and keep in storage, it just, it starts to seem arbitrary, and it seems like we're pretending we're not targeting marijuana, but we are. And if we're going to target marijuana, let's just target marijuana, and I'll vote against that, too.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. But hold on a sec. Wonderful to have you back, by the way. So Ryan, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would just like to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Bailey. Marijuana grow operations are subject to a special land use permit, which is a very stringent approval process. Lot of public oversight and a lot of public scrutiny. In addition, if you were to define it as food only, that is a very vague gray area. And it would eliminate people, exactly as pointed out, from growing flowers or growing houseplants or growing alivera. It would be a very gray area, leading to difficult interpretation down the line.
Spring, you can't even grow hops in that thing unless you're going to eat those hops, so.
No, I, I can't, no, I'm sorry.
I think you're up next. If I, Danielle, you're good. I lost track of who's in the, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't want to be, sound wishy-washy, but I guess I agree that it should be applied only to marijuana. Now, there is a option for, under marijuana ordinance, that allows 500 square feet of marijuana grill operation, which I believe is a lot easier to obtain. And although I agree it's difficult, what is the, your thought about the 500 square feet? I mean, it seems like that's a little, they made that specifically a category because they wanted to make it easier, right?
Through the Chair Commissioner, I, I don't believe, I'm confused at what you mean by 500 square feet. There is no limitation exactly how large you can have your marijuana cultivation operation.
No, there isn't, but there's a special category of grill operations that is 500 square feet. Or less.
I, I'm unfamiliar with, with what you're referring to at this point.
Might need someone to.
Perhaps another planning staff member can.
Might need someone to pull the code that, so we can.
There, there is a special provision for under, for 500 feet or less. It does have, it, it does have some provisions that are less stringent than a larger commercial grow operation. But the, but the fact remains that it still requires a special land use permit. And as such, the, it, it simply isn't an easy thing. Even the commercial one, it was noted, well, in a B3, you might be able to have a commercial grow operation on the top, but the fact is you can't. We have a number of places where in a B3 zone, people have tried to start a, a commercial grow operation. They've been denied because you have to have a retail outlet with it at that location as well. So, I mean, potentially, I suppose you could, but you'd then also have to actually have a retail outlet as part of that operation.
Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
I would accept the friendly amendment that Danielle suggested that would restrict it only to marijuana operations, so we could allow flowers and any other cultivation in the greenhouse. Is that appropriate?
Um, I, I don't really, I'd rather do it by a formal.
I, I'll second you, whichever direction you want to go, I, I'll second you. Let's just do one of those two things and vote.
So could I have someone please amend formally the amendment so it's clear for the record?
Yes, if I could. Danielle, give me permission to do that. To prohibit greenhouses located on rooftops may not be permitted to be utilized as marijuana grow operations.
And?
And, and districts by more than 15 feet.
But that's seconded by you, Mr. Walker. So just to be clear, it specifically states no marijuana in those instances. That's what, that's what the, the motion is to the Section 2 height, height exception clause that we have before us. Okay, Ms. Barker.
Thank you. I will not be supporting the amendment. It's, it seems to me that it's, it's wrong-minded for us to split hairs about what particular kind of horticulture can take place in what is essentially a personal scale greenhouse. And so I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Ms. Bailey?
I also will not be supporting the amendment. I think if we're going to essentially be creating marijuana ordinances, we should do it by amending the marijuana ordinance and not by putting in a whole bunch of different requirements into specific different chapters. It's just going to make the code more confusing and harder to enforce.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Please vote on the amendment to the motion. That amendment fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to approve Section 2 height exception language. Mr. Strike.
Yes, question for the staff. On the maximum allowable height of the district by 15 feet, you list about eight zoning areas. Can you, off the top, what is the typical height restriction of those current zones, of the zoning areas now?
Through the Chair Commissioner, it ranges between 30 to 45 feet at, at its peak. And that would be for an R4, R4A district.
So the.
And that's with height.
So no concern that we are actually, through this amendment, theoretically looking at taking a 30-foot building and adding 15 feet to it, so 50%, or a 45-foot building and adding 15% or 33%? So anywhere from 33 to 50% increase in the typical height of any of these buildings. And therefore, again, I'm not being, I'm not able to get my hands around this because I'm very concerned about the, as I wrote, the unintended consequences that this might have without having been maybe thoroughly vetted. And/or, I'm also concerned that we may not have the proper notification, especially to adjoining locations and sites, as to what this really, this ordinance could really impose on adjacent properties. We, we've heard testimony about the sunlight and so forth. Now, again, take a 30-foot building and all of a sudden we got an ordinance that says, hey, it can now be 45 feet tall. Got a problem with that? Again, I guess there's no question.
No, there, there, we have a motion in front of us, and I, I think those suggesting to either vote against it are willing to do so. If there's an amendment, you can do that, too. I got Mr. Spring, Ms. Barker, then Mr. Walker, and then I think I'm going to ask that we move. And then Ms. Bailey, we're going to do the full house here.
Okay.
Mr. Spring, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be supporting the, the amendment. I, first of all, I haven't seen any real documentation of the need for this.
Well, you just heard testimony that someone needed it.
Well, one, one person has an idea, although it may not even be used for growing any food. So it's not going to solve our problem, isn't, I think I heard. And our problem, I mean, we have a huge agricultural area just out of town in the Massou Valley that could theoretically provide as much food as anybody needs here. So I, I don't see it being any addition to our security in our food production. Gardens are nice, but is that something that we want to make an exception to the height limitation for? To have somebody to be able to put a greenhouse and grow, you know, flowers on top of the roof when there's some impacts on the neighborhood that aren't really seriously being considered by this.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Ms. Barker?
Thank you. My discomfort with this comes from, we don't really have examples from some of these other communities that you cited. And when I think about places like Montreal and Detroit, I'm thinking about cities with an overall higher density, with older, probably in many ways, sturdier structures than we have in our city. And so I feel like at this point, it's a little premature to be considering it without being able to, to really appreciate, perhaps in a more visual as well as a technical context, what exactly it is and what it looks like so we can actually evaluate the impact of the increased height in our community, as well as the, some of the issues of loading, the structural issues that were brought up by the engineer.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Barker. In some ways, the, the person that testified about a, a new, larger building that would incorporate into the, the design, I think I can sort of understand that a lot more than how it would be retrofitted. It's a good comment. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I think I share some of the concerns that Mitzi voiced, which is that we don't have that really urban type of community that some of these other communities are. I think 15 feet, I was playing around with some of the numbers here, and I mean, 15 feet, if you had a, a 312 pitch, would, is a very significant structure. And if even, if you jump down, you know, or up to a 612, which I don't, I generally, most greenhouses I've seen have a, a lower pitch because it's a hot roof and the snow just melts off, but I don't know. I, I guess I, you know, unless it was a flat roof already that had a mechanical penthouse and a parapet, and you were only, you know, and the, and the extra height wasn't really impacting the neighbors that much, I could imagine a lot of scenarios where this thing could go really wrong. So I, I, at this point, I'm thinking I'm not going to be supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Bailey?
I think this is an ordinance that, in theory, I really want to support. I like the idea of having more greenhouses. I like the idea of there being rooftop use of space. It has even been shown to reduce heat in cities to have plants on top of rooftops. However, in this instance, there can be increases from 30, 50, to 30 to 50% in height. It doesn't really seem like there's been much thought into what this could mean if, since it's a by right, that essentially everyone in the neighborhood could do this and what that could do to sunlight views in the neighborhood. Another thing I'm worried about is, based on the definition of what a greenhouse is, and there'd be no other guiding principles, that it could kind of lend itself to having an appearance of a shanty town with all these very flimsy structures on top of roofs. And I, I don't think Anchorage is known for being the prettiest city anyways, so adding that to the factor isn't something I'm looking forward to. And then also, I am very worried about the impact on existing structures, that it could create very unsafe buildings. Whereas this is a new building that's being proposed, you could plan for those things, and it could be in the site plan review. So I think this is something in theory I really like, but I will be voting against.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Through the Chair, if I may ask a question of the staff. So there's nothing here, I mean, I think we're all, you, you're kind of picking up the, where we're all headed with this thing. And I think we like the spirit of it, but we're a little concerned about the, you know, what kind of gremlins we're going to smoke out later on down the road. So I guess my question is, there's nothing here that if we don't pass this today, this, I mean, you could still design a greenhouse and, you know, the gentleman that testified earlier could put a greenhouse on top of his building. He just can't exceed the maximum height limit to do that. Is that correct?
Through the Chair Commissioner, that is correct.
Okay.
Let me ask, is there, is there, is there anything that staff would do if we just postpone this to provide more examples to the commission? Or at this case, you know, at this point, you just want us to vote up, vote down? And does it help the process if you want to bring something back with some examples and not have to? You could go to the Assembly, as is presumably, or you could, you could just, you'd have to reintroduce and renotice if we don't postpone it. So I just ask you that before we call the question.
Mr. Chairman, if postponement with extra examples, more information, if that's the desire of the commission in order to get a measure like this passed and in order to encourage more urban agriculture, that would be something that I would.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I think I'm just, we're looking for kind of the context is sort of what I was hearing. I also, you know, you could take the recommendation from the University District and say that it, it can't, you know, shade another property. I'm generally against those sorts of things because I have no idea how you actually go through that analysis other than to say a homeowner can just do a sketch-up model and it's good? Or do they have to hire an architect and do it, you know, with a survey? And, you know, there you get into sort of a complicated ordeal as well. But clearly, you could say that and let them figure it out. Or it just sort of goes down, is sort of where it's headed right now. So I guess I'd look to members of the commission. If you, if you, if you think there's something that could persuade you other than the suggestion of not shading somebody, then we'll ask them to bring it back. Otherwise, you know, if that, if that amendment doesn't come up, then we just vote. Yeah, John?
I'm ready to vote on it. I don't think examples will help, but I think there's also the viewpoint, the view issue, too, that we really haven't talked about, where a greenhouse might block a view, and that's, that's another one.
I mean, why not restru, again, I don't know. Is it, is it primarily small structures? We say no to duplexes and single families, so that's out. I can't imagine putting one on a fourplex. You know, why would you do that, right? So what are we really talking about for buildings? Should we say, if we say the R3 or R4 or just in the commercial districts, does that get us closer? Then I guess we're just really helping marijuana industry formalize what they. what they want to do. Or you have a commercial greenhouse in an industrial or commercial district. I mean, industrial's not even on here. I'm not sure why. Why would we not want, anyway, I mean, you could do it by zoning and get it out of this. What do you think the biggest application of this thing is? What type of structure do you put this on? The pictures from Montreal, big buildings, little buildings, a home?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it was mainly large multifamily dwelling complexes, as well as large office buildings. You can also have, you could incorporate industrial buildings into that as well, but large square footage buildings.
I think if you came back with something like that, that would pass. And someone that would have a building like that would have the ability to make sure that it was properly constructed and properly mitigated. So, I mean, thank you for that, but I think that's, we're confusing neighborhoods with, with, you know, large buildings that have a, I think we're all, in my head, I'm thinking a greenhouse that's somewhere in the middle of a, you know, no different than the solar panels that I have erected on the top of some of our buildings that actually do go up there, right? And from the ground floor looking up three stories, the fact that they're not on the edge, they're not, they're not overly in anybody's way. You can see them, but they're not, to me, they're not making an impact. That's kind of what I see, but it's not spelled out like that, so therefore there's, there's, I think, concern.
Yeah. Is there an issue with green building certification? Is that a component of it, or is that totally different?
All right, through the Chair, Commissioner, that's totally different.
So, this doesn't relate to green buildings and...
If staff's up for it, I would take a motion to postpone this to a different time wherein you could specify a larger building or something like that. If you're not up for it, we'll put it to rest right now. You tell us which way you want us to go.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would support that.
Okay, so could someone please make a motion to postpone the, and I think we're on Section 2, but you might as well add Section 4 as well, because it's the same definition?
Yes, so in the matter of case 2017-0001, text amendments to the Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, the Second Amendment, I would propose that we postpone deliberate, postpone any vote on that item at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any issues, staff? Anybody got any issues? Any objection? So, that's postponed indefinitely. We'll have to find a date for to bring it back. Okay, thank you.
Section 4.
He added Section 4 to the motion, to the postponement.
Probably got it.
Yeah. So, if we're ready, everybody ready? Stamina still good? Nine-thirty? Tom, you might need to go home here. Oh, no, no, it's getting late. Brandon said he really didn't want to get into the land use plan, man, about ten-thirty.
You can stay, but I'm going home.
Okay, next up, case 2017-2, municipality Anchorage Planning Department ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21 to add a new method of subdivision called unit lot subdivision. I'm gonna ask for staff presentation, and then if any, Seth, if you wanted to come and make part of that presentation as staff, you're welcome, you know, during that time where you can do it separately during the public hearing, that's fine. But I consider this to be something that was proposed jointly and, but start off with, who are we starting with? Ryan, you're up. Dave, you're up, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus Group of the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation was tasked with, recently, with identifying opportunities to augment housing development in support of workforce development in Anchorage. A subcommittee of this group met regularly to work, research, and ultimately propose this unit lot subdivision ordinance. The subcommittee was broadly represented and included municipal staff, local developers, real estate professionals, and members of the Live, Work, Play Housing Committee. This text amendment includes modification to several chapters of Title 21 to include Chapter 3, Chapter 8, and Chapter 14. These modifications will allow for subdivision practice whereby a homeowner can own the land, fee simple, beneath what would otherwise be considered a condominium-style development. The advantage of this approach is for, is that for financing, the unit lots do not need to be presold. For most condominium-style developments, fifty to seventy-five percent of the lots, or I should say the units, must be presold before financing is made available to start construction. Additionally, the unit lot subdivision results in lower long-term finance rates and therefore lower housing costs. Although this unit lot subdivision ordinance change will allow the division of existing lots into smaller fee simple lots, the ordinance will not change the underlying zoning district density allowances. This ordinance will maintain the development characteristics of the zoning districts in which they occur. One of the major concerns that was brought up in the subcommittee meetings was how do you enforce the maintenance requirements on these individual properties, similar to what occurs in condominium-style developments? And the solution to this can be found in the ordinance language that addresses your covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which is Section 7 of the ordinance. So, with that being said, the Planning Department appreciates the commission's consideration of this ordinance and the recommended changes on Page 2 of your staff packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Mr. Whitfield, any questions? Clarifications at this point? Mr. Walker?
So, I'm curious, I think, I mean, this has been in the works for a while, as I recall, and I know I've talked, maybe I've talked to you about it once before. Why, I mean, I think it's, this is a great advancement forward. I know I've personally been in the position of, you know, being a developer and trying to sell a lot that's a condominium, and people, you know, they just don't understand what condominium means. And so, this seems like maybe kind of like splitting the baby between a fully platted lot and a condominium lot. Why not just build something into the plating, you know, the actual full plating component of the code that allows you to make smaller lots under certain circumstances? Why is it necessary to break it out and make it its own?
Uh, through the Chair, I think really, one argument would be to keep the existing characteristics of the zoning district, and two would be to not allow increased density in these areas. So, I think, I think those are the, probably the two primary reasons why you wouldn't do that. You wouldn't decrease the minimum lot size requirement in the zoning districts to allow for a more traditional subdivision type. I think this allows for you to keep the character of the zoning district for which the unit lots would be located, and doesn't allow for you to increase the density beyond what that zoning district allows.
That's great, thanks. And one more quick question through the Chair. Will there be a requirement that they are called unit lots?
Uh, through the Chair, I don't know that there'd be any other way to identify them uniquely. So, yes, I would say that they would be called unit lots. I mean, the ordinance is called unit lot subdivision in order to ensure that they're being reviewed in accordance with that, that this particular section of code.
Right.
I think it's appropriate to call them unit lots, yes.
Mr. Strike?
From an observation, and through the Chair, to the staff, I've seen similar, I'm gonna call subdivisions or developments, undergo this same type of development in the Lower Forty-Eight. And basically, that was, the context was to begin little home, the small home, construction. But it also morphed into a, what do I want to say, motorhomes. And these lots were then procured by a lot of motorhome owners and then found a space, and they paved it out and had their water sewer and electric hookup, and then used it for long-term seasonal motorhome parking. Is that prohibited under this type of scenario here?
Through the Chair, Mr. Strike, yes. I mean, what you're proposing, this whole tiny homes idea, is not what would be expected to be developed under this ordinance. Effectively, with this ordinance, you would see no difference between a unit lot subdivision and a condominium-style development. The major difference between the two is that the owner of the unit lot itself would own the fee simple unit lot, as opposed to a condominium-style development where the, the land under, under the building is owned in common by the association. So, it allows for fee simple ownership by an individual as opposed to a group.
Well, this was, you know, this was, I believe, covered under the Horizontal Regime Act, in what differentiated between townhomes versus condos. But the types of developments I've also seen are individual lots, fee simple, still a condominium ownership, where these common ownerships owned a common area.
Yeah.
And had a percentage ownership, such as in a condo association. And these looked very successful. Is there a similar, when you looked at this, was there any, I believe there's a subdivision in Palmer that mirrors something similar to what you're looking to do here?
Through the Chair, Mr. Strike, you know, I'm not aware of the subdivision in Palmer. However, we did go through the American Planning Association for examples of unit lot subdivisions in the Lower Forty-Eight. They seem to be rather popular in Washington, I think perhaps Oregon. But I would defer to Mr. Anderson on specific examples of how it's been done in other areas and how it's been successful.
Thank you.
And I would just add, you know, having been a part of a group that's basically looking for market solutions to our housing issues, that I think some of us see a need to explore both what you and Mr. Walker have just brought up, smaller lots, fee simple subdivided lots, cottage housing type ordinances. And rather than lump it, lump it into an omnibus where you looked at all of these things that are sort of treated differently, we started with a very clear tool. So, I, I'm working with a group that would definitely bring a cottage housing ordinance together for community conversation and explore why that would be different than, than this. But as Mr. Whitfield said, if you could do a five-plex under the existing zoning and it's vertically separated, that's what it's gonna look like. This changes the ownership structure. It's a townhome without it being with some, with some nuances.
I, I look at like, a subdivision like Woodside East. Each of those has its own legal description, each one's insured by its own insurance agent company, and it's governed through the Horizontal Regime Act from, you know, back years ago.
Yeah.
So, they're each separate.
Yeah.
So, that already exists.
There's some differences that we might hear later on how this is slightly nuanced, but, Ms. Barker?
Actually, I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to the conversation. I'm just, in some states, there's, you know, more than one form of condominium ownership that is recognized. And one is where you own the land in the center of the earth, and the other is where you own a proportionality of the common areas, including, you know, the walls to your unit. I think my question of this, if we're looking at, trying to look at developing, you know, quality projects, is how do we combine this kind of fee simple ownership of the individual unit with a proportional ownership of some other kinds of amenities, which are what frankly make, you know, a condominium or townhouse community a community, versus just a bunch of stacked up houses? I don't know, how do we get there from what we've got here?
Uh, through the Chair, Ms. Barker, I think this can be achieved in two, well, in two parts. One is the establishment of the homeowners' association. I think that's integral to the success of this unit lot subdivision. The two, the second would be to track out those common areas, and similar to what we would do in a traditional subdivision, convey ownership and maintenance responsibility of those, of that tract that's going to be, remain in common ownership to the association. They would assume the maintenance responsibility and the ownership of that, of that, that tract. So, it's really a two-part, you would implement that in two parts. One, by establishing the association, and two, by tracking out that common area and conveying ownership to the association. That's the way I would do it.
I had a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Just by curiosity, how was Alaska Housing involved in this conversation with the Live, Work, Play Group, do you know?
Uh, through the Chair, Ms. Barker, I think I would defer to Mr. Robinson or Mr. Anderson on that.
Um, I can't remember if anyone from HFC was involved, but we did have members that were actively involved in lending and mortgage lending. And so, we had both people that were involved in the Uchiowa attorneys that set up larger subdivisions. We checked with the insurance industry, and then we also checked with people willing to sort of make a loan, individual fee simple loan, and, and that was why it took the months that it did, is because we were having each individual sort of check through this process.
I think the reason I'm asking that is actually going back to our, our last major downturn in our economy, is there is a tipping point with a condominium, that when it becomes a certain percentage owner versus investor-owned, it's virtually impossible for an individual to get financing.
Right.
And also, that Alaska Housing in essence regulates homeowners' associations. It's...
They're very active in the secondary market, and therefore...
Yeah.
What works for them tends to be how things are underwritten.
So, I'm a little concerned with some of the language in here about financing, but I, you know, it's not worth making a big fuss over. I think, as you and I both know, it's a much more complex puzzle than, than if you're on the surface.
Uh, Mr. Walker? And then we'll go to public hearing and maybe, maybe have some of this light shed, but go ahead.
I have a question for the staff, the Chair. So, the, the ordinance specifically says that it can be used to create no more than eight unit lots, and then it outlines R2M, R3R4, R4A, et cetera. So, I mean, those are, that's the majority of the zoning districts that we're gonna see this in, I would think. So, this is to say we can't create unit lots in R1, I take it? But, no more than eight in any of these other districts, seems like it restricts us to a relatively small fate at that point.
Yeah, through the Chair, Mr. Walker, you know, I think this ordinance was drafted to kind of encourage infill development, and the, the restriction of eight unit lots is, I guess, a baby steps approach to this ordinance. You know, let's draft the ordinance, let's see how it plays out, let's see how it works. And if it, if it's successful and developers are using it, then perhaps we revisit the idea of increasing the number of unit lots. But at this point in time, you know, I think, I think the eight unit lots is appropriate. This ordinance proposes to review these unit lots as a abbreviated plating action, which in our current code already restricts traditional subdivisions to eight lots. So, it's, it's in line with that, and I think it's, it's appropriate in this situation as well.
Thanks.
At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Reminder that those representing groups have about five minutes, those individuals three minutes. Please remember to state your name and spell it for the record.
Hi, Paul Stang, S-T-A-N-G, President of the University Community Council. This provision adds a new method for subdivision, fee simple property ownership of small lots associated with townhouse and cottage-style development. Dave Whitfield was kind enough to come on fairly short notice to our University Area Community Council, and gave us an excellent briefing, and answered a lot of our questions. One thing that I heard today from him that we hadn't heard before, was that the common property would be governed by a condominium-like association, that is, a homeowners' association. That was one of the issues, it seemed to me. In a condominium, naturally, people are invested in assuring the building works well because they only own within the drywall part of their, and the rest has to be maintained. With that, apparently now, that same concept being applied, but to the common areas, I presume that means driveways and what have you, where trash is put, or what have you, that sort of thing. That gives us some assurance that, that there would be a sustainable community association that was strong enough to govern that, and also to keep an eye on various properties among the... among the eight properties to make sure that they're all staying with the standard too. With that, it was with those, with that assumption then, on the Fourth of January, we voted unanimous support of this provision. We support its objectives and hope that it will encourage development of affordable housing, in the affordable housing end of the spectrum, and it would be a great benefit to the UAA, UACC area as well as to Anchorage as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stang. I see no questions. Thank you. Thank you for the trifecta this evening as well.
My name's Brian Harten, H-A-R-T-E-N. I work for Holquist Homes, White Raven Development, and I just wanted to give kudos on this coming forward. This is a out-of-the-box kind of thinking solution here and I think we could do a lot with this and just wanted to voice my support. We haven't run this through a test case or anything in this, I just found out about it this week, so, but I see a lot of potential here, so.
Brian, if I could, I know that Holquist has done a few, you all are doing a few sort of small infill in the downtown park strip area. Are you, you're doing those as condominiums? Those are small condominiums or how are you setting those up?
Those are, those are set up more, yeah. I'm trying to think of the one right now in the park strip that I think you're referring to.
It's four units or something like that?
Yeah. I think those are condominiums, yeah. Yeah. So there'll be a homeowners' association or a condominium association that monitors and takes care of the common elements and has reserve set aside to replace roofs, parking lots, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and I think just the thinking that came out is it's sometimes a little bit challenging to set up condo associate, full-fledged condo associations for small projects.
It, it is, and I don't, I don't deal with, with the association documents, but I've had a glimpse into it and it is mind-numbing in the paperwork.
Somehow it's not a cut and paste every time.
It is not as easy. Even, even setting up a simple homeowners' association is, is layer upon layer and a lot of legalese, so.
Mr. Strike has a question for you.
And I guess I'm trying to reconcile, are you familiar with the Woodside East?
Not, not, not really.
Okay, good question then, because as I, as I'm reading this, this parallels what they've already done.
We're going to hear testimony maybe from Mr. Anderson as to why he feels it's, it's a, it's a tool that he would like to utilize.
Yep.
Thanks.
And just to try and get more than one building on a lot, if it's a, if the lot is big enough and we have to go through the regular subdivision carving up parcel, a lot of times that the, not only the time, but the cost and the expense, it, it far outweighs any benefit toward that you might see for profit or per density in, in trying to get the additional homes on there, and this sets up a, a way to utilize the already dwindling land supply.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're good, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name's Seth Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-E-N. I was a member of the subcommittee that worked on putting this, this unit lot subdivision ordinance together. It might help to, help you guys understand the reason behind it if, you know, you understood what we were trying to do or what we were looking at, and if you look around the community, why aren't we seeing more infill development and why aren't we seeing more housing that's affordable to the, to the average workforce? And, you know, what is going on in that, in that infill development and the size of projects that are five to 10 units? How come we don't see those? And the answer kind of comes down to, as soon as you get over four units, there's a financing hurdle that comes in and the increase in financing rates and fees are significant enough that until you get to a project of 10 or 12 units, you can't make it financially feasible. So there's a, there's a gap between a four-plex and a larger condominium project. Another reason why you don't see something in that gap is it, so for one, if it's a, if it's a rental project, the, the rents aren't going to be significant enough to overcome the additional financing fees. If it's a for-sale condominium project, there's a lot of risk that goes into securing, securing buyers for those units. I think the standard right now is 60 or 75 percent or sometimes it's 50 percent plus one of the units have to have committed buyers before a, a credited bank can, can lend on a single unit. So there's some risk in a developer building a, a smaller, a mid-sized condominium project. So we looked at some ways, like what are some ideas that we can overcome this? And the unit lot subdivision came up as a good option because one, it, it doesn't really affect the underlying zoning. If you can build a 10-unit project there, you can, you can, that's still all you can build. If it's residential, it's still all you can do is just residential. The setbacks are the same, the size of the building is the same, it doesn't change any of that. The other nice things about it is if you look at some of the other alternative types of subdivisions like cottage developments that have kind of been discussed as, as an opportunity in Anchorage, we talked to some communities in Washington that have cottage ordinances and they all said that eventually they ended up with a unit lot subdivision because the buyers and the builders of these projects wanted to own the piece of property that we're on. So it sets us up for infill development and also sets the stage for future ordinances for alternate, alternate types of housing developments. Ms. Barker, you had a question about how do you, how do you build a sense of community or sense of space within them? I don't know that we solved that answer and, you know, I think it takes creative developers and creative buyers to do that, but one nice thing about how we set this ordinance up is that we created a homeowners' association so that there is ongoing maintenance of the exterior of the building and the, and the facilities. And one way that you can guarantee that a homeowners' association is successful, successful and lasting is to have common interest elements that they have to maintain. So we've written in there things like the water and sewer lines have to be maintained by the homeowners' association and other certain elements that are going to be in every project have to be maintained by it. So that homeowners' association is always going to be in effect. It's always going to be collecting dues and, and having meetings to manage and maintain those, those elements. I feel like I'm missing a lot. There was a lot of time and effort that went into putting this together, but if there's any questions or if anything comes up, I'll raise my hand.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? These guys stuck around for the land use plan map, brutal. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing. Before I ask for a motion, I had a question. We had a commissioner that did ask, ask a couple of things. I think we've gone through the issue of the eight units and why the limitation, but the other question that Mr. Spinelli asked was the limitation that exists, which I think is a carryover for just, from just short plating, if I'm not mistaken, that says that you cannot unit lot subdivide something that has been created within the previous, a lot that has been subdivided within the previous 48 months. Is that, is that where that language comes from, Mr. Whitfield, is from the short plat?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that, that is correct. This is, this is a section of code that applies to all subdivisions. And so it, and we had brought, we had talked about this earlier today and Mr. Spinelli had inquired about the potential of exempting unit lots from this section and, and if the commission decided that they wanted to, I don't think that staff would object to that and staff would even offer some suggestive language on how we would accomplish that. So if that was something the commission wanted to do, we would certainly entertain it.
And there were, there are two issues, right? One is that, you know, someone that's subdivided within the past year or two didn't know this even existed, so how would they, you know, got themselves into this? And second is longer term, does it matter that someone subdivided two years ago and they want to further subdivide? I mean, is...
Well, it does in a way, and the reason why this 48-month requirement is there is to prohibit or discourage the stacking of short plats. One of the ways to get around the public hearing process is by going through a short or an abbreviated plating process. So if somebody was to come in and do eight lots and then a month later come in and do an additional eight lots and then, you know, so on and so forth, you're circumventing the, the public process. So this 48-month requirement eliminated that. And so while this may be a good application in traditional subdivisions, I'm not sure that it would be, it would be good in a unit lot subdivision. I, I think, I don't think that it's going to impact the public anymore. So I would entertain the idea of exempting unit lots from, from that 48 months.
So no fear with someone doing a short plat to eight, eight lot, eight parent lots and then a month later they've now turned it into 64 unit lots? They went through a public, they, I mean...
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, this ordinance is really intended for, for infill development. So what's the likelihood that that's going to happen? I, I think it's fairly minimal, you know, and if they, if, if a developer came in and they did eight traditional lots, parent lots, they could still put the same density in there. So I, I don't know that you're really achieving much by requiring a public hearing for these eight unit lots. I, I don't think that you're really accomplishing much. So, you know, I thought about it today, I've tried to come up with scenarios that would have a negative impact on the public and to be quite honest with you, I can't think of any.
Okay. What's, what would be your suggested language if, if we were comfortable with...
If I could direct the commission to page five of the staff packet and specifically lines 30 through 32, under 3A, created within the previous 48 months in perens, except when considering unit lot subdivisions under AMC 2108070E and perens pursuant to the approval of the, of a preliminary plat under this section. That's what I would suggest.
So you want to try it one more time?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, give me just read it again, in case someone is so inclined to take that up.
Sure. Created within the previous 48 months, perens, except when considering unit lot subdivisions under AMC 2108070E and perens pursuant to the approval of a preliminary plat under this section.
Great, thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Walker?
In the matter of case 2017-0002, I move to approve the ordinance as presented by And I didn't, I, I know where we're talking about in the ordinance, but I didn't catch all of, all of the staff's recommendations, so I'd certainly be open to that amendment as well.
Okay, motion to approve the full amendment. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anyone wishing to speak to the ordinance or offer a, an amendment to the main ordinance?
So I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and make the amendment too, but I'll ask the staff if you wouldn't mind reiterating that.
Yes, through the commission, I would make the amendment as follows, and I quote, "Created within the previous 48 months, perens, except when considering unit lot subdivisions under AMC 2108070E and perens pursuant to the approval of a preliminary plat under this section." And this would be a modification of AMC 2103200B to B3A, for clarification.
I think we got that. You got it? So did, did we offer it up as a, as a separate amendment to the motion? So could you, motion to amend, could you hit your, get a second? Any objection to the motion to amend the main motion? So hearing none, the main motion is amended, we're back to the main motion. Anyone wishing to speak to the main motion? We are voting. That recommendation for the ordinance to the assembly is, is adopted. I would add that this, this ordinance is the result of the Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus, looking for housing and particularly affordable infill housing solutions in Anchorage, older Anchorage neighborhoods. I think there was quite a lot of consideration of how it, not only how it could be used, but how it could be misused, if you will, and I think we're eagerly anticipating people attempting to sort of utilize it to look for homeownership options in, in our, in our, in our closer-in neighborhoods. So thank you for that. We have two other items on our agenda, one that Mr. Walker really wants to get to and then a, a resolution. I, I want to, I don't know how many of the land use plan map things we're, we really want to dive into. I, I wanted to ask because our friends from UAA are here, how, how many issues are specific to UAA on, on this list, Tom, that you have in front of us?
I don't think that any are.
No? You guys just follow them generally? I think we're, we're running out of steam here, but if you guys sat through, we at least can hear from the staff presentation on the, on the, the sections that you're most interested in. And then I, what I would tell you also is we've, we have booked a, an actual, I guess it's a formal meeting, right? On January the 20th, here in the, in, in the chambers during the day, and then our January 30th meeting, and those two meetings are intended to deal with these and all of the remaining issue responses at that point. We intend to sort of go through them all and hopefully adopt them on the final January meeting. So on the 30th. I'm trying to gauge, what are, what are people thinking? We've got a, we've got a resolution to, from people mover that we want to get to because that, they wanted that for their process, right? And then it's however much stamina everybody has and I'm sensing, I'm sensing wind out of sails here, but...
And, and one question, I know that we postponed the resolution on the consent agenda for case number 2016048, and we did that because we didn't have enough to vote, and I'm wondering when that's going to come back up and what our attendance at that next meeting will be.
Well, so back to that one, that one is, is a function of our next, like can we even take it up on the 20th? It's a formal meeting, there's no reason. And what I'll ask Lori to do is if we don't have the, the, the numbers, someone's going to have to listen to tapes, right? And we'll make sure it gets done. I mean, I think that's the only...
I, I will not be in attendance on the 20th or the 30th.
Well, I mean, as long as we have five or six people on the 20th, we're going to have the meeting on the 20th regardless, because I think we're going to go into committee the whole, even if, and, and we'll, we'll have it in that meeting, but, but if we have five, we'll just make sure that we can vote on that resolution.
So we didn't have five people that are here today that were here for that case? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, it doesn't seem like these amendments are that, or these issues are that controversial that we have to face, there are about 10 of them. I know I'm running out of steam too, but... I know I'm running out of steam too, but it would probably help the staff if we could do that, because we have so much else. How far are we through the list of issues, if I may ask?
I don't have a precise number for you, but I, I think that getting through these would help get you to the top of the hill or nearly there.
May I ask, Mr. Chair?
I mean, I'm good at this point, but yeah.
Do you have any, any issues with these?
We just want to take them in bulk?
Why don't we just do them all in bulk? I'm, I'm okay with them. I've looked through all of them, and I've checked them, and maybe I have one question on one of them that...
All right. You want to make, and, and you want to make a motion to sp, well, again, we're doing these informally in the committee of the whole anyway.
No, we have to go into committee of the whole.
And then we would, if you want to just in bulk, committee of the whole, talk through them, with or without full staff presentation.
Or just whoever has an issue, bring it up, and if not, we'll just say we're good on all of them.
How about I put you on the spot, and you lead us through the committee of the whole process?
Okay.
One, so you can, a couple of words on each, on each, on each one as you go.
Okay.
Like a, literally like a word summary, here dit, dit, we're moving on. And then if...
I'll do my best.
Yeah? And then if we need to, we go to Tom.
All right.
So are we good with taking this? So we're taking up case... 2016-0127, continuation of the land use plan map. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
I, I've made a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Can we get a second? Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any objection? We are in the committee of the whole.
Okay. First issue is 1E on page 11, public information and involvement in infill development. This looks like a process issue, how to go through and deal with infill development. Planning department's response was basically, yeah, we agree there's some good points that they're making. They're adding one new recommendation. Previously, we approved recommendation number two, which made some edits. So that's not, that's not part of our discussion. We already discussed that. Third one, though, is a new one. Add a new last sentence to the first paragraph of strategy 10 on page 57, which reads, comprehensive plan amendments are a public process, which seems like apple mom and apple pie, and what's the third one? Or whatever. I mean, nobody can object to that one, right?
I guess. Any objection to 1E? Seeing none, put that in the check column. Mr. Davis? You can track these? Go ahead, John.
All right. 1J on page 14, clear clarity of policy 4.1 language. This was a issue brought up by Nancy Pease, one of several. The, and the staff basically said that, they, they agree that there needs to be a clarification of policy 4.1. And their wording of policy 4.1 changes it on page 15 in states, provide sufficient land across out areas to meet the diverse housing needs of Anchorage's citizens, where the integrity of the residential neighborhood area is protected from encroaching commercial corridors or non-neighborhood employment activities. I think there was a misunderstanding by the, the commenter that, which staff tried to clarify to some extent. The idea is that the, and there's some misunderstanding, I think. The staff intended that this recommendation tried to, to ensure that their housing needs are, and the land that provides the housing that's needed isn't diminished or rezoned to something else. But in the final analysis, they decided to try to clarify that, basically, don't encroach on it and, and take some of that land from the supply of residential that's needed for future population growth. So I think they did a fairly good job there.
Although it didn't take Ms. Pease's language, so that'll, that'll, that'll come back, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, I might, I might suggest that instead of encroaching commercial corridors, sounds a little awkward to me, that it might say is protected from encroch, is protected from encroachment on commercial corridors or non-neighborhood employment activities.
I don't, I don't have an issue either way. To me, it's wordsmithing, I don't think it does that much. Anybody?
Take it from his...
Tom?
That sounds good.
Am I my on? Just take the word encroaching out.
I guess the word encroaching is there to, to clarify that this is referring to expansion of commercial corridors or non-native neighborhood employment activities. In other words, more than just protecting from commercial corridors, which you could do by buffering or walls or what have you, this is where you're protecting the integrity of an area from expansion, physical area expansion. So if the word encroaching is a problem, the expansion is better, expansion from, but we would recommend keeping some word to evoke that issue.
All right. We got an expanding. Got to have, are we good with expanding?
Good.
Yeah? Thumbs up, expanding. So, everybody good is 1J, changing encroaching to expanding. Next.
Excellent thing. Okay. Issue 30, or 3O on page 39. This one I will ask...
Did we miss, did we miss 3B?
Perhaps the, well, those are, those aren't listed as issues.
Okay.
I don't know why they're colored green, but they're to be decided later, we'll have to vote on them.
Okay.
But it's actually 3O. And now this one, I would, says open space, no net loss protection. And I might ask staff if I could, I don't understand the example that you used there in the second paragraph, but didn't quite click. Where it starts, however, the suggestion for a no net loss requirement could also complicate changing appropriate land uses.
I think what our, our main point is, is that we believe through updating the parks plan and diagnosing area-specific deficiencies in parks, and, and wherever those may be, that, that would be a more flexible way of addressing the need for parks in, in existing and growing neighborhood areas. And I believe in action 8-7, we do have with the Parks Department their review and support, an update to the Parks Plan, which includes updating the deficiency analysis. And then rather than subject ourselves to a pretty strict regimen in the plan of, of wherever, wherever we add or, or, excuse me, wherever we take away open space, we have to, in that same action, add it somewhere else or to that area, that that would be problematic.
I guess, I don't understand what the example would be. Where, where would you be taking parkland? And what example would you be reducing the supply of open space or parkland? Would that be mostly private development, where there's a tract of open space instead of, rather than a public park?
You know, if, if this concern by the public refers to open space in general, I could see examples of where we may have non-dedicated open space. Maybe it's even public land that's put to other use.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that at all. I, I'm agreeing with staff's no changes. This is getting us down something that just doesn't make me comfortable. I, I don't know. We can, we can agree to disagree on it, but I just think we're down on...
I, I agree with the no change, but...
I, I, I think if it's park, you have issues of it being dedicated park, and that's a process that is protection enough. If it's open space, then you have a whole bunch of issues as to whether it actually is intended to be preserved as open space, and I mean, I just, you can go any which way. The general sentiment of a balance of land uses is not disputed in our comprehensive plan, and needing to have green spaces and connections and, I mean, that is, that is not, that's not going away. No change? No change? Next.
All right. 3D on page 40 involves watersheds or riparian areas and green infrastructure. And it's another hillside suggestion, I believe. And we wanted to make sure that there's, this action 5.3 included not only inventory of conditions and capacity of Anchorage's infrastructure, including water, sewers, stormwaters, et cetera, but also included watersheds and riparian and green infrastructure. It looks like the staff has made, suggested a small change, which is underlined in the new wording on page 41, which says, "Develop and maintain an updated, datable," that makes sense, maintain, they do that anyway, so what the heck, why not put that in? An updatable asset inventory of the condition and capacity of Anchorage's infrastructure, including water, sewer, stormwater, blah, 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 and energy utilities, and green infrastructure, such as parks, wetlands, and natural drainage ways, especially in areas designated for growth. So I think they comply with the suggestion to some extent, although they don't add riparian, which I think might be a little bit hard, and wildlife corridors, which might be a little hard to define. So I don't think they maintain that information in their database anyways.
Are, are we creating an unfunded mandate?
Well, I think they already take care of wetlands and, and parks, they already...
I just want to be careful that we're not creating an unfunded mandate.
But drainage ways, I don't know if they...
No, I mean, you are. We don't, we don't really fully keep track of our storm water system, for example. But we should.
Well...
Yes, thank you. The, the idea of an asset inventory of our infrastructure is, is, we believe is one of the more important actions to implement this plan. We may come forward with a recommendation to where that action exists on page 63, to once we've conferred a bit more with the agencies that carry out these various services or utilities, to add a dollar sign in the dollar sign column, if we determine that in fact this action is somewhat of an unfunded mandate overall for, for all of our infrastructure. We have to some degree gone down this path for the land use plan map project with the AWU. And in fact, they created an initial first pass inventory of some areas of interest in the state of their water, wastewater capacity. And they indicated to us to go into further detail for the rest of town would be a major project for them, but they agreed it was important. We believe that the, the green infrastructure, like Commissioner Spring said, parks and wetlands in particular, these are things we're already tracking or wanting to track as part of other actions such as the Parks Plan. Thank you.
You good with it?
Yes, good.
Yeah, I'm good. Anybody? Not good? All good? Okay, next.
All right. 3Q on page 41, incentives for open space tracts and new subdivisions and redevelopments. They want, the commenter wanted to reinforce that and, and add more incentives and probably a strategy or whatever. The sponsor of staff was basically, we already did that, item, action item 7.5 calls for adoption of the hillside conservation ordinance. And there's various references throughout the plan for conservation subdivisions, cluster housing, PUD subdivision regulations. The incentives are already there.
We're good.
Okay. 8F on page 64 involves innovative districts, which is an interesting concept. It's a, it's a new idea, I guess, that's been batted around in other areas. And the staff response, and I'm not sure exactly how it would apply here, but I think it's like, you know, I hate to use this, millennials, you know, like to be near the edgy areas and have an area where they can, there's a concentration of tech services and whatever, like we're going to be a tech center of the university, I guess somehow. But I guess it could happen, I don't know. But this is something they want to have a little bit more time to consider, do the demo research. They don't want to just jump right into something like this, and want to give it more consideration, I believe, right? Tom? And so as a result, there's no changes at this time. They don't discredit the idea totally, or mock it like I did, exactly, but it's maybe not ready for time, time yet.
Well, I think there's a very clear economic development effort that, that goes way beyond zoning effort. I mean, it's, the strategies are not easy to, I mean, unless the land use is prohibiting these sorts of things, but this is, it's not the zoning that's going to create something. Danielle?
The only thing that I have a slight issue with is it's just we talk, the way that it's addressed in the comments makes it seem like it's a valid concern, but then there's really no date that it's going to be addressed. And so if it's actually a, something that we should be thinking about, is there a timeframe that we should be looking into this? Rather than just saying, of course, this is a living document, and then everything could be added on additions later. So I just, I don't know. I think they bring up a whole bunch of points of why this is a good idea, and then if it's actually that good of an idea, maybe we should be setting a date that we look into this, or, I don't know. I, I, I don't really have any objections to, to this, but it just, it made...
I think, I agree with you, I think it needs a champion, though. And short of actually finding that champion, I don't know that you can put a date and it's going to make any difference. I mean, if, if Chris Shute's department decided to take it up and run with it, or AEDC decided to, then great, but short of that...
It's kind of like it's, it's, it's the flavor du jour. So I think leaving it open, I think makes more space for, you know, Prescott's using the same word again, but you know, other innovative concepts that may come along as opposed to tying ourselves to one particular one.
I'm fine with that.
Why, why wouldn't we use that second sentence in the recommendation and incorporate that into the findings? Rather than just saying recommendations don't change at a time, I think that second sentence belongs in the context of 8F. So it can be addressed later.
But I think it actually does say it in the recommendations. It said, you know, should budget assign resources to incorporate?
I mean, isn't that comment a appropriate response from us to incorporate into this document?
As a strategy or...
As a placeholder for future reference and attention to.
It would be more appropriate to be a strategy, wouldn't it?
Well, as I read it, future amendments or revisions, should budget assign whatever. That is a strategy.
You're suggesting we just use the whole language there from...
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying we don't lose that language.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
In any document that's ultimately put forward.
Are you back in the queue, Danielle? No. Yeah, I just, again, I think, I think you're, you know, well, and, and what are we really saying? We're going to potentially identify an innovation district in a land use plan map process, and then it might happen? I mean, it's going to come the other way around. It's going to come because there's a driver. The university's going to say, we want this here. I've got someone pitching it to me in Spinard. If I make it and I have a problem with zoning, I'll come back. You know what I mean? It's, it's...
Yeah, it's more organic.
Yeah. I'm good with the recommendation. Yeah. I'm good with the recommendation. I, I like the idea, but I don't, I think, again, this, we're, we're getting too far afield. Ever, anyone have a problem with no changes at this time? Are we good with that? Yes? Okay, next. How many more do we need?
We just got, um, four more. Uh, 8G, page sixty-five, hillside conservation subdivision ordinance. Um, this was a, uh, recommendation, I believe, that was in the hillside district plan, right, Tom?
Yes.
And, um, it already has a, uh, there already is a action item, a recommendation, um, seven dash five, which reads, "Adopt the hillside conservation subdivision." So I think they address it. Tom is recommending adding the wording, "Following policy direction in the hillside plan." So, like, it doesn't, doesn't really need to be probably added, but it, it makes them happy. I think that's good.
Fine.
Okay.
8H, stream protection setback ordinance. Um, oh, it says, uh, action, existing action eight-three is vaguely, is stated vaguely. Um, it should be specified that it's fifty feet, which is what's, um, I believe, um, the existing, um, fifty-foot setbacks on the hillside. Um, the response by staff says, you know, we, we're working on this thing, the stream protection ordinance, and, uh, we're in the process of it and we're directed by the assembly to do that. Uh, let us work through it because it may be not one size fits all and that, um, give us some flexibility. We'll take care of it. No changes.
Danielle?
Another one, I think I might be nitpicking, but I think there is something important that they've identified that expand, expanding the setbacks is something that it sounds like is necessary. And so maybe instead of saying setbacks should be expanded to fifty feet, say, including expanded stream setbacks that are included in the Title twenty-one rewrite. Just referencing that, and I, again, this might be being too nitpicky, but it seems like, what if someone else drops the ball in this process? This is another way to encourage that.
Brandon's asking, I mean, I think there's some, there's some process to look at steam, uh, steam protection ordinance, because I've been affected by.
Somebody working on this stream protection thing right now?
Yeah, give them the code.
Uh, yes, that's correct. And the, uh, uh, yes, the code, uh, in Title twenty-one calls for this ordinance, uh, including expanded setbacks and some forms of relief to property owners that, uh, may be substantially affected by the setbacks. So it's a two-part mandate specified in Title twenty-one for this new ordinance. Uh, the team's been working on it and I think it's intended to come forward to planning a zoning commission here soon. I think the land use plan map, they will be one of those cases that's in the way.
Which is all well and good, but what if that fails? So, I'm just.
Give me specific language, Danielle. You can recommend it and we'll see if we got, we got people that are going for it or not.
All right, let me pull, make sure I get. So. Um.
Just, just to paraphrase, we've got the hillside district that's adding some language. The staff has come back and said, "Hey, we're addressing this. We're working this. It, don't, don't mess with it yet." Is that kind of what I'm hearing? That's what I'm reading? The assembly's got it. It's, it's just, let's not be definitive of what we're doing here. Let's not adopt what was one group has placed. This is non, this is a trackable, ongoing issue that's being worked. Therefore, we shouldn't take any action on this item and allow the process to work itself through the system for this particular item. So I'm hearing that, that your, your recommendation is no change at this time.
Uh, yes, that's the, that's the staff recommendation. Uh, and, but, you know, it is a, a basic, um, assumption of this, uh, stream protection setback ordinance is that they will be expanded, at least in, in, uh, most areas. And, uh, that's the purpose of the, the ordinance. And so if there's, the, uh, the commenter asked that they be, the setbacks be, uh, expanded to fifty feet or greater throughout the municipality. That's the commenter's specific requested language. And, uh, I think the staff reaction to that was, uh.
Too definitive, too broad. I mean, it's not, not appropriate for this language.
Correct. Too specific and too broad.
Danielle, what do you got?
Um, I would just add the word expanded. So instead of being adopted, adopt stream protection setbacks in Title one, I would say adopt expanded stream protection setbacks in Title twenty-one.
Tom?
Staff has no objection.
So moved, so ordered, so.
I, I, I think the issue is, and the reason why this ordinance has taken so long is it doesn't work in all places.
That's right.
And so you're putting in, you know, a, something that just sort of, the, I get where Nancy's coming from on the hillside. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work in urban areas always. And I just, I don't have, I don't, I mean, I, I'm all for adopt expanded, uh, stream setbacks where the situations allow or where the municipality is willing to sort of, you know, play a role. And, I mean, but it's just saying it, I, I don't, you know, I'm willing to say we're either split or no change because I don't, I don't.
Well, remember that case we had in Spinard? We had a creek setback. So that would have been a problem here.
It would have.
I'd lose lots of lots if I went from twenty-five feet to fifty. I mean, I'm just telling you, lots that we've bought that were buildable lots. And so it doesn't work there. Or if it works there, someone ought to buy those lots from me because they're no longer worth a buildable lot. I mean, I, that's kind of where I come from.
I think we don't want to dictate it here.
No.
That's all I'm saying. Danielle, what?
No change.
Adopt expanded stream protection setbacks. Yep.
All I'm saying is I want to agree with you. You can argue it in front of the full commission.
I'm fine leaving it as is.
Tom?
But then I'm, I'm, no change.
We're, we landed at no change. We getting booted? Please boot us.
No, it's like, this was something I thought I was being nitpicky on.
Can, can I go?
Yeah, go.
All right, fourteen C on page eighty-four. I'm going to need some help on.
What about these other ones? Are we not hitting these?
No.
Fourteen C.
Um, yeah, I'm, okay. Everybody understand that one?
Come on, John, you're on a roll.
I'm, I'm good with the next.
All right, then last one then.
What?
Okay, last one, I think is another no-brainer. It's just, um, they missed some open space tracks on the hillside, including, um, near Parada Road. There was some open space in a private development and they didn't identify it. Oh my God, that's a tragedy. And there might be others that might not be identified. Let's make sure we identify them.
So is that what we're doing, identifying them?
Yeah.
Great.
That's what it says.
Okay, well done. Tom, you good?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yep, yep. Thanks for coming out and hanging in there late. We have, uh, yeah, could I get a motion to, uh, come out of the committee, the whole? Brandon, seconded by Mr. Strike. And then I guess we'll need a motion to postpone the, uh, land use plan map to January the twentieth. Mr. Walker. Oh, is that okay if it reads that way? Motion to postpone, Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Spring. This is to January twentieth. Any objection? No objection. That item is postponed. We have Mr. Spring's resolution. What do we do with this? Everyone have a copy in front of them.
Um, do we want to get a motion on the floor so we can talk about this?
Very good. Thank you. Uh, motion for Mr. Spring to approve and Mr. Walker to second. Mr. Spring, the floor is yours.
Yeah, um.
Maybe a bit of background as to why we're even dealing with this for the, I mean, I know Danielle wasn't here. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's the, there's the big transit talks or listens or whatever project. And there, this is a big, this is a very significant change in the people mover strategy and route system. Um, it totally revises the, the hub system, hub and spoke system. Uh, we had a good presentation, I think, by the transit director. Um, and it's , uh, pretty significant. And they identified through this staff consultant report, some major flaws in the existing transit system and the declining ridership that's been occurring over the last, um, five or six, seven years, and which they don't really understand why. But part of the reason is that the routes are very circuitous and they takes forever to get to someplace. I think I researched this and found that on average it takes between two to three times longer to go someplace by, uh, bus than it is by car. They're increasing, and part of that is not only the circuitous routes, it's the time between stops by the bus. It could be an hour between each bus. So you get there, um, sometimes the buses are late. Sometimes you have to wait half an hour if you miss the timing. And there's all kinds of, um, transfer issues because of this. Transfers are very difficult when you have long, um, gaps between service. What they're doing is they're moving the service. There's two, um, concepts. One's the eighty percent concept and one's the hundred percent concept. Both of them more or less, um, uh, reverse direction in that coverage is not going to be the motivating factor anymore. They're not going to try to cover the whole city. None of the alternatives cover Chugak, Higa River whatsoever. Um, and they reduce substantially the service in South Anchorage. So they're moving more towards, um, ridership, boosting ridership. Coverage is not the issue anymore. So there's an eighty percent and a hundred percent ridership alternatives. Um, they both have some major, um, improvements that they anticipate. Um, so we were asked to review it and, and give a, uh, recommendation regarding, uh, which alternative we like. Um, I'm uncomfortable, I guess, in my, um, resolution trying to decide whether which one's the best. I don't want to be one of those that gets egg on their face when they find out that maybe it wasn't a great idea and where ridership isn't that, that substantial. What I didn't see in the report from the consultant was any estimate of the ridership. Which one is the best for ridership? All we heard, and maybe I'm underestimating the importance of this, is that the hundred percent ridership, um, alternative has a lot more benefits regarding his ability, the transit director's ability, to leverage other resources for improving transit. Uh, some of the resources that might be leveraged, I, I'm really, I, I had a long discussion with him, with Abou today, and I'm still not absolutely sure how it really works out. But you can leverage things like taxi ridership, he said, was one example, um, where you might be able to get taxis to, um, um, provide the last mile between the bus stop to your home, if you had the system like he's envisioning. You might be able to leverage, um, some money from a, uh, the, uh, um, sorry, the Centennial, that's Cook Inlet, right? Centennial.
You're drawing me into it now, yeah.
Yes, I'm trying to drag you.
We're paying for the bus that.
You're paying for the bus out there on Centennial Drive, which is the senior center, right? And a hundred dollars for a ride or something like that. He would leverage, um, improve the ridership on the bus, but, um, leverage some of the Cook Inlet, uh, money to provide, uh, access to the bus route system. Well, that's, that's what he said to me. So I don't know if that's all this, that's going to happen or not. But, um, another example was that downtown, you don't have to have a hub system like we have now, where you have a transit center. You could do away with a transit center and you might be able to spur some redevelopment around the transit center because it's a horrible blight right now, which could potentially be destroying property values all around it. Yes, they do, right. Which is the re-gutted and.
So, so to, so let's, so basically you drafted an ordinance that captures that and, and your, uh, resolution says that we're not, we're not totally comfortable with the hundred percent concept, uh, that we would basically consider to hybrid, which, which somehow suggests like a ninety percent con, something between the two, right?
Right.
Based on ridership potential. But I have a hard time believing that their analysis didn't actually include an analysis of ridership.
No, it, there was no, um, he gave me some figures and I asked him how he got them and I didn't really get any good information. I think it's kind of a educated guess. He said, uh, actually that the hundred percent has lower ridership or have lower ridership down the eighty percent.
Initially.
He said, and well, yes, right. Yeah, and that's a lot of assumptions involving redevelopment along the rider, along the transit routes as a result of the improvement in transit, which I find in literature is not supportive. I don't see anything in literature that says that transit, bus ride routes, if they aren't bus rapid transit, don't really leverage redevelopment along there. You have to have a light rail or you have to have a bus rapid transit to do that. And, uh, he gave me an article and sure enough, it referred to light rail as the spur. It was, didn't have anything about the bus system as being a spur for redevelopment. But I would concede this though, I think, after talking to him. The A under the, um, resolution, the commission has some concerns with respect to adoption of the hundred percent concept map route changes, which would radically change the system, may not result in suspension of ridership. I would strike that because I don't know if that's true or not. I mean, I'm, I'm guilty of the same thing I'm accusing them of, which is, I think I know what the answer is without doing any analysis, so.
So you would keep B and C as written?
Yes, I would keep B and C and I think.
How about you could just change A to say radically change the system without, without any proven, um, I don't know.
I'm not, I, I, I wasn't comfortable with A because basically I believe people mover is trying to do something that they absolutely must do, that they have a business model that is, is bad and it's getting worse. And long-term, the lack of doing anything, we're in a bad, we're in bad shape. And so.
That was my intention of this too, was to support the concept. They're, they're not, some of their idea, they, they hit it right on the head, I think. It's not working. The routes are too slow. There's not enough frequency. It's circuitous. And I think I went a little overboard on that.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Um, well, so my only concern, I mean, I guess I, uh, you know, I sat there and looked at both plans myself and kind of agonized between, and there really wasn't a ton of evidence. It wasn't like, you know, they're giving you this really great business plan that explains exactly why the hundred percent model is the silver bullet that's going to cure all that ails us. Um, so, but I guess I just wonder, like, so when you're talks with him, he clearly favored the hundred percent plan, but he doesn't have, he doesn't, I mean, I think it's ridiculous to assume that developers are going to flock to some arterial because you've increased bus routes and suddenly now you can get a bus in fifteen minutes where it took forty-five minutes before.
Or it might spur somebody to, uh, like a big employment center to have a transit management, which would be.
Right. I just, I don't want to split the baby for him though. I guess what I'm worried is if we split the baby here and he's got a real plan in mind, then we might totally muck up the, the plan. But it kind of seems like his, his hundred percent is found, not necessarily founded on all as much evidence.
Well, he's still going, he's still going to, uh, try to convince, um, the mayor. I don't even think he really needs to convince the assembly.
Right.
I mean, this was what was frustrating in listening, listening to the presentation. I've talked to him afterwards too. But it, um, you know, I remember the picture of the forty-foot empty bu- bus. And he goes, "This is not, this is not a, um, this does not mean the system's a failure." And I pointed back to him, I said, "Yes, it does. Empty buses are." No, no, having the routes there. So that's what he's concentrating on is maximizing having routes available. Then if we build it, they will come and riders will join in.
What about, what about we just keep A? The commission has some concerns with respect to adoption of the hundred percent concept map route changes. And then keep the rest? We have some concerns. If those concerns can be dispelled, then, you know, then, then the hundred percent can, you get this body's full support at some later time, but I don't think it's there yet.
Any other two follow that?
Right?
We have some concerns, therefore you should look at hybrid, therefore maybe you should do some more analysis with them.
Is there, is there an additional statement that, that can be made that, that we recognize that something needs to be done to increase ridership and, and, and functioning and, and fund, fundability of our, of our.
I try to express that in a way.
Okay. So if you're. If you're good with. So if you're, if you're good with just the first line of A, then we can vote on it. Danielle?
I have some problems with the fourth whereas. I think it's vague, and I also think it might not be true. I think when it says reduction in coverage, that could be talking about frequency or geography. And if it's talking about frequency, I don't think it's true, because if we reduce the frequency even more, that's going to make it so people don't use the buses. And so I would be first in favor of deleting that one. Second, if I don't have the support of that, I would prefer it to say, whereas the commission agrees that the reduction in geographical coverage is a strategy to increase the frequency of the remaining routes. Otherwise, I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting it, because I don't... But coverage, frequency is a means of coverage.
I'm good with your amended language about the geographical coverage. I mean, that, I think that's what the, it was trying to say.
Yeah, I think, that clarifies it, I think.
I could do a formal motion.
Go ahead.
So I would move to amend the fourth whereas. It says, whereas the commission agrees that the reduction in geographical coverage is a strategy to increase the frequency of the remaining routes. Tom, it ends.
Any second? Seconded by Mr. Strike. Any objection? Okay, that's adopted. We're back to the main motion, but I think, John, you may want to clarify A, because I think we sort of nonchalantly had it, so what...
We need a motion for that?
I think, to be clear, we should have a motion to that, so go ahead.
I'm going to move to amend item A to state, the commission has some concerns with respect to adoption of the 100% concept map routes, route changes.
Okay. Seconded, that good with you, Danielle? Any objection? No objection. Back to the main motion. Any other, anything else? Amended A, leaving B and C in, and there's a, there's an amended whereas statement. You got anything else? No? You're good? Please vote. So I don't know if, John, maybe that passes, if, if you could either pass this on, you had, you have a, who has an electronic, since it's not a planner that did this? So she, Corliss can turn this into a deal so that I can sign it, because it's amended now? I can do that? Let me do that? Okay. Is that yours? Motion to adjourn? You guys deserve a gold star tonight, holy moly. Thank you, everyone. See you in July. We are adjourned.